Recording in progress.
Ready to go? All right. Welcome, everyone, to the regular meeting of the San Rafael City Council. Today is Monday, December eighteenth. I'll ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Bushy.
President.
Councilmember Hill.
President.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Vice Mayor Adens Galati is absent. Mayor Kate.
Present. There are four of us here this evening. I'm going to invite the city attorney to report out on a closed session that was held prior to this meeting, as well as one held on December sixth.
Good evening. No reportable action was taken in either meeting. Thank you, Mayor Kate.
Thank you. If this is your first meeting, then you know that we always thank staff because of the incredible work that they do every single day. So to close out 2023, I want to take a few minutes to individually name the incredible employees who have received employee or team recognition through the city's internal recognition program. So for each quarter of the year, people or teams are nominated by their peers. And tonight, I'm going to share the winners, and they already know this, so I'm not giving something away, from Q1, Q2, and Q3. It's quite a list, but it's important, we believe, to individually name each of these individuals because these are the folks who comprise the city. We often think it's a nameless, faceless group of individuals, but no, it's an actual group of people, and they deserve these accolades. So in order of the calendar year, Q1, the employee of Q1 was Tiffany Haley. She's a program coordinator at the Terra Linda Community Center. The team of the quarter was the Streets Maintenance DPW Division, and I can tell you, they're very busy today as well. The Streets Maintenance Division is led by Supervisors John Schindelis and Gabrielle Diaz. The team members include Kenny Gatlin, Tyler Nord, Arturo Tinoco. Street maintenance workers also include Jeremy Cantal, Matthew Gauwiler, Brendan Smith, Michael Castanada, Trevor Thomas, and our sweeper operator is Edward Miranda, and I think I saw him out there today. Q2, the employee of the quarter was Simon Wright. He's a defensible space inspector with the Fire Department. The team of the quarter was the wildfire mitigation team, and also a shout out to the community who's done great work of reducing vegetation management in their properties and in the surrounding area. The coordinator is Kate Anderson. Manny Albano Albano is a community disaster preparation coordinator. Calvin Schreeder is a veg management specialist. But we also have wildfire mitigation specialists who are out there, and you might have met some of these folks. Justin Gormalo, Simon Wright, Michelle Dietrich. Our inspectors were Ben Flint, Cedric Adana. We also had a digital grant and program specialist, Fel Agrelos, and we did provide, the city did provide grants for homeowners that needed them, so he was very busy. Our seasonal defense defensible space inspectors, Sarah Zaragoza, Lynette Thompson, Joe Aiello, and Jack Hamel. Those were for Q2. For Q3, that we just awarded this past week, last week, Matt Von Bima, he's a public works inspector. And then the childcare team. And you'll just have to, like, take a deep breath because it's quite a list, just so you know, the childcare team. So San Rafael is unusual compared to other cities, especially Marin County, in that we have a childcare division. It comprises twenty-four permanent employees, seventy-five seasonal temp staff. They work across six school-aged childcare centers and two preschools. We're very unique this way. Collectively, I don't know who figured this out, there's four hundred and twenty-seven years of experience that they bring to San Rafael. The leadership team of the childcare group is Kelly Albrecht, Gabby Farias, Angie Stunts, Trish Sarado-Sailers, Maria Velardi, Sonda Sokolow, Jackie Newsom, Jocelyn Halron, and Diana Mueller. The administrators are Kelly Albrecht, Jason Fong, Sharon Lang. Now I'm going to name these incredible people that work with the children in San Rafael, our children, every single day. Parkside Preschool, we have Jackie Newsom, Lori Granucci, Ule Hedland, Emma Jacobson, Joe Lipsky, Monica Roberts, Natalie Chase, Suporn Lin. And as I said, we have more than one site. We have the Pickleweed Preschool. There we have Maria Velardi, Matthew, I'm sorry, Martha Hernandez, Ycenia Hernandez, Sam Kilabru, Elizabeth Rivera, Sonia Sims, Karina Velasquez. We also have a program at Coleman. Diana Mueller, Eva Galetti, Natalie Molina, Ingrid Tejada Escobar, Kai Thompson, Nate Zarin, Sam Carter, Abby Dupre, Stephanie Garcia, Maddie Jensen, Sydney Lewis, Catherine Mann, Andrew McGrath, Marco Muschi, Lucy Reyes, Zadie Weber, and Riley Halron. We also have a program at Lucas Valley. Gabby Farias, Sally Farias, Brendan Burke, Esmeralda De Leon, Max Musavich, Addison Mastallerts, Jeanette Pilgard, Trevor Revai, Savannah Seidler, Alexander Sutherland, and Mary Silvera. Silvera, I bet there are people in the room that didn't even know we had all these programs. We're going to keep going. Angie Stunts, Devin Alderman, Calvin Albrecht, Grace Alilovich, Oslo David, Carrie Lynn Hairston, Daniela Maldonado, Tara O'Brien, Kelly Young, and Cole Simon. Finally, two more. Parkside School, Sonda Sokolow, Terrace Bland, Jasmine Martinez, Rebecca Newsom, and finally, Valacito. We have Trish Saruda-Sailers, Grady Bowers, Yasmin Alvarez, Andrea Delone, Jennifer Delone Ortiz, Kylie De Pio, Leila Harris, Mila Harding, Elliot Shott, Jonah Truitt, Molly Young, Jeanette Bra, and Lucy Sailors. So thank you for, I want to say even indulging us. It is so important that we have high-quality childcare, and these are the individuals that are providing it to our community, and I couldn't be more proud of them. Yeah, I like that. Thank you. And then finally, to close out the year, we also include a land acknowledgement as part of our opening. In addition to the statement that I read, we work with the tribal representatives on our shared issues throughout the year. We thank the original caretakers of this land. San Rafael is traditionally home to the Coast Miwok people, many of whom today are tribal citizens of the Federated Indians of Great Ranche Ria, and we honor their continuing involvement and stewardship practices that benefit us all. I'll now turn to the city clerk to commence how people can participate this evening.
Thank you. Mayor Kate, the meeting tonight is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube, where members of the public can watch through Zoom or listen in by calling six six nine four 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 nine one seven one, and they can use the meeting ID eight six zero six one nine zero five six seven five pound. If you experience any technical difficulties, you can contact me at city.clerk@cityofcenterfall.org. In regard to public comment in the chambers, displayed on the podium and the projector is a two-minute timer to help you stay within the two-minute timeframe. You're invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of San Rafael you live in, or if you're from outside of San Rafael. We do offer closed captioning for this evening's meeting on Zoom. If you're watching on Zoom, you can select the live transcript button to enable that feature. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll start with the city manager and council member reports, and I'll turn to city manager Alilovich.
Good evening, mayor and council and the community. I have a number of updates for you tonight. First, I want to introduce you to a couple of new amazing staff that we have in the audience. Margaret Kavanaugh Lynch is our new planning manager. And on the screen, I think she, there she is, Laura Simpson is our new interim community development director, so I wanted to introduce her. You're going to hear more from them later on in the, in the meeting. I also wanted to provide an update around homelessness in the city. There's been a lot going on, so I'm going to give a brief summary and then let folks know where they can get more information. So as the city council knows, we adopted a new camping ordinance this past July, this last month, and then we were subsequently sued and were in federal court over this lawsuit. And last month, the court issued a preliminary injunction order that provides some modified spacing rules from our original ordinance, allowing up to four individuals to camp together in four hundred square foot area, so that's a hundred square feet per person, allows up to four people to camp in one location while maintaining a minimum distance of a hundred feet from other campsites. The court has also required the city to produce a map showing where camping would be permitted in that general area. And this is the encampment I'm speaking of that's now currently existing on Anderson-Landaro and Mahone Creek Path. Under the court-ordered procedures, the homeless union is responsible for coordinating and registering the individuals to which campsites they will move. They're working on that now, and the actual moves are planned for January. I also wanted to let the community know that I recently issued two administrative orders that alter some of the conditions on Mahone Creek Path and on Lindaro Street. On Lindaro, camping is now prohibited to protect the adjacent creek, and on Mahone Creek Path, no new campers are permitted to camp. And, and part of the rationale for that is the court has ordered us to have these permitted campsites, and if additional people come to camp on that site, it'll interfere with our ability to follow through with the court's order. It's our goal to implement this order, the court's order, in a trauma-informed, empathetic, and human-centered manner. And to that end, I want to thank our nonprofit service providers who we've been working with, that's St. Vincent de Paul, Ritter Center Downtown Streets Team, Homeward Bound of Marin, Community Action of Marin, and the Marin County Lived Experience Advisory Board for their expertise and partnership in helping the city conduct an outreach event last week for us to better understand the needs of the campers and to make sure they're aware of the plan moves to one of the permitted sites coming up in, in January. We also have updated our news, our webpage, that summarizes what I've just said in a little more detail, the city's homelessness website, and that also includes a link to a more detailed implementation plan that kind of speaks to what the action items are over the next four to six weeks. You can find that at the city's webpage, cityofsanarafel.org/departments/homlessness. So that's the update on homelessness. We also, this week on Wednesday evening, have our first-ever public meeting on the Police Advisory and Accountability Committee. That meeting is here at City Hall in the upstairs conference room, December twentieth at six PM. Community members can also participate and provide public comment in person, or watch the meeting via Zoom. We can accept written comments to the email, which is PAC, the acronym, P-A-A-C, all caps, at cityofsanarafel.org by four PM of the day of the meeting, to be recorded in the minutes. To view the agenda, staff reports, and the Zoom link, you can visit the city's meeting page at cityofsanarafel.org/departments-publicmeetings. Next up, we have the Public Service Award. We're looking for nominations for 2024. For anyone who meets the criteria of being an amazing community member in San Rafael, nominations are being submitted through January the twelfth. This is our last meeting before then, so I wanted to put a shout out for that. The award winner is recognized at a city council meeting and, and at the annual seat of the city dinner. That's also on the city's website at cityofsanarafel.org-public-service-award. We also have a holiday closure coming up. Just a reminder that city administrative offices will be closed from Monday, the twenty-fifth through Monday, the January the first. We'll reopen on Tuesday, the second. Of course, all of our police, first responders, paramedics will be fully staffed with nine-one-one dispatch, and public works, and our sanitation crews will also be out there monitoring storms and, and monitoring emergency maintenance requests. We appreciate all of them for their service during the holidays. Our first council meeting in, in January twenty twenty-four will be on the sixteenth for the first meeting that will begin at six PM. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'll turn to my colleagues, Councilmember Bushy.
Thank you. I represent the city of San Rafael on the San Rafael Sanitation District. From there, I am the representative to the, the Central Marin Sanitation Agency, that is the wastewater treatment plant. This past couple of weeks, I've had meetings both with issues that are interrelated, so that's an unusual situation, so I'll, I'll go by issue. The first issue, and the CMSA, which is a joint powers arrangement with the San Rafael Sanitation District, as well as the Ross Valley Sanitation District, and Corte Madera, increased its rates for all members. That rate went from the forecasted increase went from three and a half percent to four, to four percent. That increase was brought back to SR SAN and reviewed to make certain that our rates could accommodate that increase in price. So I worked with both of them to make that go forward in a, in a smooth and seamless way. In addition, San Rafael Sanitation District has a unique relationship with the city of San Rafael, and that our employees are actually employees of the city, and we have services on contract with the city of San Rafael. We, we, the board of the San Rafael Sanitation District, sent a letter to the board of the CMSA inquiring as to the possibility of entering into negotiations and discussions with them to discuss possibilities for future service arrangements between the, the two organizations. That was met favorably with all our fellow JPA members at CMSA, and the discussions will begin, and we will see what types of efficiency improvements we can bring forward to both of those boards. So complex interact, interactions in our, our, our community. I also, in a much simpler fashion, spoke to the Peacock Gack Homestead Association Annual Meeting, gave them a rundown on all the issues that we have been working on so diligently with the city. And finally, I met with Supervisor Sackett for our quarterly meeting to go over issues of common interest with the county.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Kurtz.
Thank you. It's been a busy season. So we had the city's holiday reception with, the whole council was able to make that for our committees and boards. Many of you who are here this evening, I think, attended that. We, I had a meeting with the TAM, Transportation Agency of Marin. We were viewing some of the crossing guard conversations. North Bay Leadership Council Lunch, we had to honor Cynthia Murray, who is retiring, and Joanne Webster, who's going to be taking on that position. We had our city holiday lunch to be able to just enjoy some time with the city, for all the personnel of the city. Many menorah lightings across Marin. I had a great tour of the EAH properties that are in Marin, one in Corte Madera and one in Larkspur. Tour of Vivalon site, and they'll be, Vivalon will be officially opening, I believe it's January second, with their programming. The first couple floors are with Vivalon, and then that will be their programming that they've had previously at Jackson Cafe, as well as a new cafe. And above them is Eden Housing, low, low-income housing above that. Presentation by Marin Academy students on homelessness. With Mayor Kate, we did a tour of Venetia Valley Schools Family Center. I joined the Contempo Community for their holiday party. And lastly, we had the Lighted Boat Parade with everyone on the council. That's it.
It didn't rain.
And it didn't rain.
Yes, it didn't rain. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. I have two meetings to report. I attended on Thursday, December seventh, the city schools-county liaison meeting. Recently, it was reported that school board members, Gina Daly of the San Rafael School District and Brooks-Wen Miller Creek School District are stepping out of their roles. I just wanted to give attribution to their service. I thought they serve their communities with distinction and honor, so I just want to call that, them out, that I did serve side by side with them. And then also, on Monday, December eleventh, I attended the finance subcommittee meeting. We went over various topics, including vegetation management service agreements upcoming, as well as fire dispatch services, and our new upcoming enterprise resource planning, ERP rollout, all very exciting things for the city of San Rafael in the context of finance subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you, and it has been a busy couple of weeks. Everyone's trying to get it done before the end of the year. We always have ribbon cuttings. There's a new Pilates place on Main Street, Port Street. Cue the Core, fantastic ribbon cutting with a lot of attendees. I was able to speak at the Chamber East San Rafael Working Group, and as anyone who follows our tax base knows, that is where our biggest sales tax generator is out in East San Rafael, so it was a great conversation. I am your representative on the Transportation Authority of Marin, and it was a very long meeting, so I will recap it very quickly. TAM was recently awarded over half a million, I'm sorry, half a bill, five hundred and forty thousand dollars to develop a school access safety action plan. So it's really looking at mobility around the schools, and that will be spread throughout Marin County. There was a long conversation about e-bike education. The county is taking a lead on that. There is a dashboard on the Marin County site, really starting to track incidents having to do with e-bikes, as well as communication around education. TAM is working on coordinating transit with the North Bay. What a great idea. So a conversation between Marin and Sonoma, and really looking at how do you have the fares be seamless to go from one part of the North Bay to the other. And then finally, we had a very long conversation around crossing guards. San Rafael now has two new intersections that will have crossing guards through the end of the school year. One's at Freitas and Las Pavadas, and the other is Las Galinas and Oleander. We're very appreciative to the TAM board for approving those additional intersections for our community. And then finally, there had been a bike share, e-bike, sorry, e-bike share program that had started before the pandemic. The pandemic hit, the provider went out of business. There's a new provider called Drop Mobility. There's a new two-year pilot. There'll be three hundred bikes that are going to be set pretty much adjacent to the Smart Line and other high transit areas. There's seventy-five hubs, so stay tuned. We're hopeful that that will really help with that last mile conundrum when people get off the Smart Train or get off a transit and still need to go a little bit farther. And, yep, I think that is it for all the meetings. Thank you for hearing what your council is up to between our moments on the dais. I'm happy to accept any public comment on the city manager's report that you just heard, or any of the council member reports. So I'll look to the chambers if you'd like to make a comment. Now is your time. Okay, not seeing any. I will close the public comment, and we will move to the consent agenda. Are there any items to be held from the consent agenda? Looking at my colleagues, I will open public comment, and the consent agenda is items four A through E, so if you'd like to comment on the consent agenda, please come down. Not seeing anyone, I will close the public comment and request a motion on this item, please.
Move that we approve the consent agenda?
Well, second. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries four zero. Thank you. Our first public hearing is the Marin Sanitary Services Rates for 2024. I see our sustainability manager, Corey Bitoff, joining us. Welcome. I know it might take a bit to get the, I don't know if we have slides.
I do. See if I can remember how to do it. Okay.
Okay. Well, if you don't, the, the city clerk can help you if you get stuck. The city clerk can help you if you get stuck.
Of course, I'll have to ask her because I can't.
I know, I know. It seems so straightforward when we're at home, but when we're sitting here in a room full of people, it doesn't seem as straightforward.
Oh, it's right there in front of me the whole time. Of course it was.
No worries.
There we go. Great. Oh, it's. Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come home and show me how to do that home too sometimes. Good evening, everybody. Nice to see you. This is our annual rate review and authorization of maximum rates to be approved for Marin Sanitary Service. And it includes an illegal dumping program update and as well as a fee study. And this is the presentation. We'll do about half of it on the rate review and the franchise fee study, about half on the illegal dumping program. And then we can open up for questions in the public hearing. And we do have Patty Garberino here and her staff from Marin Sanitary Service, if you have any questions. And then we have Garth Schultz here from R3 Consulting Group Inc. as well, if you have any questions on the franchise fee study or the rate review. So again, every year we bring this forward and to allow maximum rates for Marin Sanitary Service to be authorized to begin on January 1st. And a little bit of background, which is in your staff report, state allows the city to regulate, which we do refuse service. We work with other Marin jurisdictions that have similar franchise agreements with Marin Sanitary Service. So that's Larkspur, Ross, Fairfax, San and Son, Las Galinas Valley Sanitary District and parts of the county of Marin. And that just helps us leverage economies of scale to be able to do things more efficiently and cost effectively as well. The annual rate review is based on a methodology that's in our franchise agreement with Marin Sanitary, which you all adopted in 2018, which sets a much more streamlined and transparent way of setting rates that the public can actually understand and is mostly based on CPI increases. And then it's reviewed every year by an independent third party to ensure accuracy that it's applied correctly, that the application Marin Sanitary provides is, is done correctly with regard to our methodology. And then Marin Sanitary, you know them as the three Rs, reduce, recycle, recover. They've been at this for a long time. The state's been catching up and there's a lot of legislation as well that's requiring more and more of that. So everything's sort of in the context of resource recovery these days. So the rate review before you is 6.22%. And there's a couple of main drivers for that. Inflation being the one that everybody knows about. The CPI Water Sewer and Trash Index that we use had a 5.7% increase this past year, but we have a cap in our methodology that only allows Marin Sanitary Service about 5% for their operations and staffing. And all that kind of keeps costs in check to some degree. And then there's another recycling market downturn. As you know, they go up and down and up and down and we haven't seen anything like the Chinese sword from several years ago. And we hope that we don't see that again, but this was a big downturn this year, particularly for paper and plastics. And so we take the costs that it is to process the materials and all the staffing and all that. And then we apply the revenue to it to try to offset most of those costs. And we still saw that there was a fourfold increase in costs this year. Went from about $18 to $80 a ton for processing costs. One bright spot is Marin Sanitary seeing some uptick in commercial service again post pandemic. Some more businesses coming online, some more increase in service for businesses that are here. So that'll bode well for the longer term. Great. And then the context of SP 1383 that we've talked about a lot over the past few years as it came into effect this year, January 1st will be the first time that we are required to start enforcing on SP 1383. So businesses and residents that are not diverting the organic waste and have not procured a waiver will have to start enforcing. Fortunately, back in, I believe it was June or July, you authorize our city manager to sign an MOU with Zero Waste Marin to tackle most of that for us. And they've been hiring staff and doing a really great job. And so they're working directly with Marin Sanitary Service on these customers that have not stepped up yet. And their intention is to do everything they can before they actually leverage the enforcement. But they're, they're going door to door as we speak. The other big piece of SB 1383 had to do with procurement. So the state's really trying to set up a circular economy here. And in order to do that, we'll have all this organic material going and getting composted. Somebody's got to buy that to keep those places in business. And so they're requiring cities and towns to do that and counties. And you may remember, I came forward a couple of years ago with, we have to buy 136 times more compost and mulch than we do every year. Well, the legislature stepped in and started putting in some tiers. So this past year was a 30% of that total requirement. And Marin's, I mean, Zero Waste Marin jumped in right away and was able to get some third-party brokers involved that get major amounts of it from someplace and very cost effectively and efficiently get it to farms, especially in the Central Valley. And so it's applied reasonably rather than our staff having to apply it. So that's very beneficial. We'll see a 65%, I believe it is next year, and then it goes up to 100%. So it's going to get more and more challenging as time goes on. So we always like to give you sort of an order of magnitude. What does this really mean for customers? And so if you approve the maximum rates authorized for Marin Sanitary to charge customers that we go into effect January 1st, for the most common residential service, it'd be about $3 a month increase. Commercial changes are all over the board. They're dramatically different depending on the commercial. Some of them are as small as a residential customer and just have the carts you've seen from front of us. Some of them have multiple dumpsters multiple times a year. The most common commercial rate though is a three-yard dumpster picked up once per week. And that increase would be about $39 increase per month. Costs can often be reduced by recycling and diverting, you know, and not using as much garbage because that's mainly what the garbage rate is, is based on. And so there's a lot of encouragement for people to sign up for organic services and to recycle more. And then of course, for residents, there are low income rates available based on the PG New Care Program. Comparison of rates, this is in your packet. This is in the R3 study. Just to highlight, the green side is all Marin sanitary jurisdictions, so we know what the 2024 rate is. And so you can see where San Rafael sits amongst those. The blue are all 2023 rates because we don't have insights into these other waste haulers and what their rate increases are going to be, but they'll most likely go up. And so that's our comparison for the common residential customer. And then the new thing this year is our franchise fee study. So staff was made aware last year that the State Supreme Court ruled that franchise fees may be subject to Prop 26. And so we needed to look at our franchise fees and demonstrate reasonable charges based on a cost of service fee study, which was just recently completed by R3. So we brought that forward with you as well. We needed to demonstrate reasonable charges for all the city costs, our operations, our staffing, materials, all that, use of city property and the vehicle impacts. And so what the study did was it looked at it and said, and showed basically that we are, our costs are actually a little bit more than what our franchise fee is and therefore our franchise fee is reasonable and justified. And so that's in your packet and part of the resolution tonight. There's no changes to the fee. There's no changes to the way we apply the fee or anything. It's just to, to verify that it is reasonable and justified. So now moving to our favorite topic, illegal dumping. As you know, this is a five-year program. We're in year four of it already. And we brought forward a big hairy audacious goal of reducing illegal dumping 50% by 2025. And we applied a human-centered design lens to really understand who are dumpers? What, what makes up different types of dumpers? Dumping is related to three things. Homelessness is one and we did not apply a lens to homelessness. It's a very different thing than this. And also this is based on Marin sanitary and rate payers. And so we focused on casual and illicit dumpers. And so we've spent a lot of time digging into that. And what we mean by casual, and I know you've heard me say this before, but for the benefit of everyone else, the idea was to look at prototypes. Who are, who are the dumpers? What are they dumping? What are they dumping? Why are they dumping? Casual dumpers are folks that are typically renters, mostly in multifamily properties, and they do set outs. They may or may not have a sign that says free. Everybody else does it. By the way, there's no free curbside pickup for multifamily dwellers. It's costly. A lot of folks don't even know where to take it, right? So it's a different animal than what we're terming illicit dumpers, which are folks that know what they're doing. They may even be getting paid for it. They'll load up a truck and go out someplace, you know, by Home Depot or someplace where it's dark and dumping in nighttime. And when we did that, we started to understand what those two categories were. We found that more than 90% is really casual dumping. So that really sort of directed our, our efforts then and what the types of interventions we looked at. The one thing that we've learned over these four years though, is the interventions need to be holistic. Need to have access equitable, easy, right? Remove the barriers. People know what's there and available for them and it's cheap. It's reasonably priced. You need to have ongoing engagement and education with folks to, you know, people receive their information so many different ways. Gone are the days when I started 20 some years ago where I could throw out a press release and I would get most people, you know, so. And then enforcement or the threat of enforcement is to be involved. And what we learned too, we initially didn't think you would apply that to casual numbers, but that threat of enforcement needs to be there for everybody. We spent a lot of time building our baseline data set, so we could really say, yeah, we did reduce silicon nothing 50%. We've done a lot of engagement with folks in the community, neighborhood associations, folks like Los Angeles Canal, Canal Community Resilience Council. And then we've captured it all in this whole idea of we're going to change things. If we're really going to look at this systemically, how do we make sure we do it in the most equitable way possible? So last year, we did some more hotspot campaigns, which included enforcement activities. Police and Code of Enforcement have been very active in this and Public Works, obviously. And I'm so glad you recognize the Streets Division. They do so much on this. And we've asked them to do so much data collection too, which can be really challenging, especially when it's raining. We saw a big increase in participation in the bulky item drop-off days at Pickleweed Park. Moving that to a monthly event for the last weekend of the month. It's just now you, we do surveys and over half the people in the town know about them and know when they are. We did a lot more data analysis and corrections. We did some data analysis around multifamily properties and overages and those that have minimum service or don't meet the minimum service level. We weren't able to show causation with dumping, but we did see some correlation there. We wrapped up our mattress recycling council pilot. We were funded to do a pilot where we tested on-call pickup with select apartment managers to see how that would work and what, what really transpired. We've talked to other places that have that and not necessarily seen reduction in dumping. So we're really looking at what is that real connection and how does it really work? And how, how would something we brought forward really do what we want it to do? And we presented at the statewide dumping conference in Oakland as well. And then this is an image on Jordan Street, which we had great success with. Public Works and volunteers worked at that site, worked with some of the businesses to get some surveillance cameras, did some, police did some drive-bys, talking to people that were hanging out there a lot. Worked with the school district and put up some signs and trash cans. And we've seen a dramatic reduction in dumping litter there. So they have a lot of promise. And this just gives you a sense of what can happen. These are some select areas that we tested over three years. And you can see a pretty dramatic reduction in dumping. These are folks that we mailed directly to all the tenants and apartment managers. We did, you know, multi-factor and interventions there and everything. I will say the 21 reports in 2023, we met with Public Works and found that it's actually a little bit more than that. But we did, still was less than 77. So we have seen a reduction and this was just with a very finite time period. And so what we're planning for 2024, if approved by you all tonight, is to focus on wrapping up the project to bring you a council study session sometime in the summer. So we want to do a landscape scan and make sure we're not missing anything. There's lots of cities addressing this. It's different in different cities, obviously, but there's a lot of cities addressing this. So we want to make sure we're not missing anything. We'll develop a portfolio of what we think needs to be involved and some scenarios and what those might cost. And then also do some community input and review and feedback sessions to make sure people are asking the tough questions that we're getting, you know, it's a stress test what this portfolio looks like. We'll do some more camera installations and enforcement, mainly regarding our hotspot campaigns. We've got a couple of other hotspot campaigns we're planning. We'll continue the mini-grants. Those have been very successful where businesses or multifamily properties get up to $1,000 to install a security camera or do some other crime prevention through environmental design work like motion censored lights or fencing. And then, as I said, I'll in preparation, bring something forward in summertime for you to review. So that's the end of the presentation. We can open up for questions, comments in the public hearing. And, you know, before you is a resolution to approve the maximum rates allowable for Marin Sanitary to collect and also to determine that the city's franchise fees and refuse vehicle impact fees are justified based on the cost of service fee study that's before you as well. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Cory. A great summary of a good staff report that's in our packet. And I will turn to my colleagues for questions. I'll look this way first. Councilmember Kurtz.
Hi, thanks for the great report. I have a question about the recycling. You said there was a market downturn. Is that, I would expect that, it seems like we're recycling more and the costs would go down. Is the downturn that what people are not purchasing the recycled products?
That's one that I might see if Patty or Justin or Jason might be able to address. Or Garth.
Welcome. Welcome, Garth.
Thank you, councilmembers. Garth Schultz, R3 Consulting Group, your consultant on matters like these. So recyclables are a global commodity. And it's subject then to the rules of economic supply and demand. Who's buying what, where, for what reason? Are there regulatory changes that they're facing in their host nation with risk that might affect the price of the commodities? So, and I think part of it is your question predicated, we're recycling more of it. So maybe we'd have more value to it and it can actually have the opposite effect. We might have a glut in the market of valuable materials, but not enough demand for those. And that changes periodically. They go in multi-year cycles. Post the Chinese national sword in 2017, we saw kind of a slow ramp up in the value of materials like paper, fiberboard, even plastics to a small degree. But then they kind of went back the other way. So natural ebbs and flow in this commodities market is pretty common. What we're hoping to avoid in the future is something that was such a steep decline as we saw back in 2017 when China instituted new policies. So I hope that answers your question.
I think so. Yep. No, absolutely. I mean, ideally, as we're recycling more, we're feeling like it's actually going, like it's the right thing to do. And therefore we wouldn't see a downturn because that might dissuade people from recycling.
Right. So it's, it really is the right thing to do, but that doesn't always mean that it has a high economic value. Even with composting, the cost of compost, organic materials, in many cases is equal to or might even exceed the cost of putting it in a landfill. And that's, has to do with a variety of factors. The landfill was built some time ago and it's an engineered solution with fairly fixed costs, whereas composting is a very dynamic process that's subject to additional and increasing regulatory oversight from airboard, waterboard, state solid waste board, local, local policies. So those, those more dynamic processes, organics and recycling can in fact exceed the cost of putting it to a landfill solution.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Onto illegal dumping, near and dear to I think many of us. The current pilot was focused in just in the canal area. In 2024, do you anticipate looking at expanding the geography for the pilot in a way?
Yeah, matter of fact, we're talking both to folks on Lincoln Avenue and on Mary Dell Road, two big hotspots for illegal dumping, where people would really like to see some effort made. And we have some volunteers that live in both areas too, so we're hoping to engage them and get some hotspot campaigns to happen. And we do market the bulky waste days beyond the canal, but trying also to make sure that they're for renters.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, just in terms of like the, the areas that have lots of multifamily units, definitely on the north side for sure.
Definitely.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Yeah, thank you, Cory, for the presentation. I actually had a follow-up question on the recycling costs. So first, just to affirm what's going on in my head. So that, that informs the rate. So if there were a time when we would recover more money or it costs less, say, to recycle, would we, would that inform the rate that the rate could be lower? I mean, obviously there are other factors, but that, does that inform the rate directly?
Yeah, I'm not sure if I've seen where the revenue offset the cost entirely. But like last year, it was $18 a ton for processing and this year it's about 80. So it, it went up dramatically, but it was a lot less per ton back then. Have you seen a time when the revenue offset the cost?
So, one, I think part of your question is if there's recovery in the recyclables marketplace, will that accrue to the benefit of the rate pair in future years? And the answer is yes. The methodology automatically accounts for those changes going forward. So in times where there's less value, rate payer shares in making up that. When there's times when there's more value to those commodities, the rate payers get a credit for that. So that is automatically adjusted in the methodology. The, you know, prior to 2017, there was a time when there was a net revenue generation, not a net expense associated with recyclables processing. And I don't think that time's coming back. Really, we should expect going forward that there will be some net cost of processing, which means running it through the materials recovery facility and plastic here, cans there, bottles there, paper there. Those then are bailed and then shipped to their international or domestic marketplaces. So that activity, I believe, going forward in the future will always have a net cost compared to the revenue generated from the sale of those materials.
Great. Thank you. And then my follow-up question to all this is, the fact is that we're looking at all of the downstream effects of how we consume. I would just go out on a limb to say, you know, what, what if we could press the magic button? I would just go out on a limb to say, you know, what what if we could press the magic button that said, consumers, what what are the better ways that we could consume such that we can actually do ourselves a favor, not just for the environment, but also for our rates? So in other words, we may wish that every type of plastic is recyclable, but my recollection is maybe one type, one type two and type five are the only ones that we can really recover value from some of the time. So I guess, is there anything that we can do as consumers to improve not just our environmental impact, but our our rate?
Since I'm up here, I'll take a tack at that one. Statewide regulation around manufacturer responsibility is one key tool in the tool chest. Putting the the onus for end of life recyclability in the material, you know, the markets for those recyclability is one of the key strategies being pursued here in California, elsewhere internationally. And right now you see it in things like mattresses, carpet, TVs, paint. And it's very successful with those types of materials. It hasn't really reached the level of the more common consumer recyclables like plastic, paper, all that. But that is one key strategy that, you know, individuals can advocate for on a statewide basis or petition their, you know, suppliers or the types of folks that are selling. And the other thing, of course, is just general waste reduction. And that is kind of the unfortunate reality of our, our current kind of economic societal model is that, you know, though 30 years ago, we weren't recycling quite as much. We also were generating half as much overall waste in terms of our waste stream. So that's a key tenant in this, and that's hard to control for at the end of the line, which is where we're all at right now. It's really something that has to be generated from a larger government level scale or industry or manufacturer level scale.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bushy.
Just a couple of questions. Corey, if you could remind me, we're on a schedule. We do a big revenue requirement study and then we have escalation years in between. Is next year a revenue requirement or where?
Technically, we could have, we could have done it this year. Either party can can request one every five years or so.
Okay, so does that mean? What does that mean for next year?
It's very possible that it could be requested or we could continue on as an index year.
Oh, okay. So that I didn't realize that we could continue on indefinitely.
That's that's my recollection, Garth. Yep.
Okay, that sounds that sounds great. It sounds like the escalation factors are working well. So why why upset this after part like it? Another question about the revenue requirement. I'm presuming that the revenue requirement includes the cost of the food to energy program. That is an innovative program with the Central Marin Sanitation Agency.
That is a good question. I haven't dug into that.
Thank you, guys.
So closer next time. Yes, so it's it's a part of their overall carrying costs. It's not a huge part of the overall operating figures, but it is included in the the rate revenues that they receive as funding for their payment into that part of the program.
To put the costs that they incur in their program, because the program has them collecting food waste in their in their district and bringing it to Central Marin Sanitation Agency, placing it in our digestors where we make electricity out of it. So food to energy programs, very innovative and very happy to be a part of it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, that was a comment.
Those are questions? Okay.
Yeah, that was.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Corey, for a great presentation. So I had some question about processing, kind of building on what my colleagues have talked about. So how well is maybe this is from insanity, how well is our community doing in sorting? So everyone, what they call aspirational recycling, and I know that was something that there's been a lot of mailers about trying to get at that. And I'm just curious, when you're looking at the trends over time as a community, San Rafael, are residents getting better in terms of what they're putting in there? Recycling either green or brown bins? Welcome. Oh, you have a prop. Oh, didn't even know that. Okay, great.
San Rafael is doing very, very well. Thank you. And a large part of that is the fact that the program started in nineteen seventy nine, nineteen eighty. So we've been at it a good long time, but we continue to have the highest participation rates in the state and the highest per capita recycling rates in the state as well, I'm very proud to say. A lot of that too is the unique marriage between the conservation community, the awareness that is here in Marin County and the hauling community, which back in the day and probably still now was not a natural marriage. So it's enabled us to propel and move programs forward, like the food waste to energy has a phenomenal, we take in twice the amount of tonnage than we thought we would in our feasibility study and generate, as you know, twice the amount of energy that we thought we would. And that's been also spurred on by thirteen eighty three as well. Does that answer your question? Okay.
It does. Did you want to show your?
Yes, I could. And I just a little bit to say too, if that's all right. Should I wait till public open time?
Yes, that would be great.
Wonderful.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple more questions around SB thirteen eighty three. So there's a commercial aspect and residential. Could you clarify in your presentation, it seemed like you were talking about commercial, which I want to say it's easier, but it's probably easier to. We have more systems to work with commercial. In terms of the residential, it was zero waste, I think, that's going to be doing the enforcement. I'm curious, what does that look like? Is it literally zero waste will be going down streets and looking in people's green cans to see how they've done? I mean, I'm just curious.
They'll be working on is the the commercial piece is what.
They will be. Okay.
Working on. Yeah, exactly.
Ends up just because the sheer tonnage is much bigger and.
Exactly. There's a lot more requirements. So I don't know if Justin if Justin wants to say anything about residential, but the requirements and the ability for waivers and all the requirements for commercials really where a lot of SP thirteen eight three is at.
And I know this is new legislation that we're still trying to figure out what it's going to actually look like, the mechanics. Welcome, Justin.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thirteen SP thirteen eighty three, as we all received mailers in the last couple of weeks from the county. So what's changing in 2024 is the enforcement piece. So this regulation has been in place for a couple of years. But in 2024 jurisdictions like City of San Rafael are required to enforce. As Corey mentioned, most of that enforcement will be on commercial. But for the residents, we're already going down streets, looking in people's containers. And that that is part of the requirement of SP thirteen eighty three. City of San Rafael has to do route audits or route reviews is how it's referred to. And the way that there's a few ways that can be done, the way that we are doing that and and part of our contract is to fulfill that on behalf of the City of San Rafael. So we have our employees who are going down a street and they'll they'll pick a random number of homes and and look inside of their contents to make sure that there isn't organic material in in the landfill container and that there's the proper recycling in the blue container or the well, the brown, the blue side and the brown side of the recycling container. And that there's not garbage or recyclables in the organics container. So we're required to do twenty five per route per jurisdiction. So we're doing hundreds of those in the City of San Rafael. And we did those in twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three. So that's not a that's not changing. We're already doing those.
And is there, so if someone can do better, is it an education? Do they get a piece of paper? And then what is the enforcement? What's the penalty? Does that come to the individual or does it come to the city ultimately?
Yeah, good question. So the 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 follow up to that, it's not a it's not a penalty. It's a required notification that we found contaminants. Forgetting the term that they use, but that we found contaminants in there. We send a letter with with a picture of what we found, educating the customer on on that material.
And then in terms of the penalty, the enforcement, will the cities be fined if we're not reaching the bars that the state has set for us in terms of thirteen eighty three? Or do we not know? My asking, Corey's smiling. Do we not know yet?
Cal Recycle has been very enforced, they've been approaching us with a lot of enforcement over the years, but we're not sure, but we're not getting the same kind of contact from from Cal Recycle that we did in the past, the past year. So I'm not really sure what they're going to do, but as of January first, they can start to find us as well. So.
I'm just trying to get it with that nut could look like if we're not all.
I will just say that, you know, that's that's part of the agreement with Zero Waste Marin too. Because always Marines working directly with Cal Recycle on this. So we have a little bit of breathing space there. And even though we are ultimately responsible, the Cal Recycle has been working with Zero Waste Marin in a very positive way lately. At least that's what I'm hearing from the Zero Waste Marin staff. So.
And I'll just chime in briefly. I think that in the context of the conversations we've had with Cal Recycle over the years, that I just want to say, I think we we're doing a remarkable job at compliance and we have a plan and we're very proactive about it. And the work that Corey and the team has done in Zero Waste, I think is very favorable. And I think they there may be bigger fish to fry around enforcement than San Rafael is my hope.
I hope so, because I know that the dollars, anyway, I'd heard that there could be some really big penalties and fines that could be associated with that. So.
Yeah, and sorry, just to add a little bit as well. The the state's enforcement will be around the required items for the city to implement. So it's not the state's not going to come in and say San Rafael is doing a poor job at recovering organics, therefore we're going to find you. It's there. There are prescribed items within the regulation that the city must implement. And and there isn't anything, you know, that we're aware of that hasn't been implemented. So, you know, I think you can rest at ease to know that, you know, your your staff, your consultant and and your hall are doing what we can to prevent any.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Justin. Thank you. And then I just had one other question for Corey, really building on Councilmember Kurtz's question about the illegal dumping program. So we're going to have a summertime workshop, said we're year four of five years. As I understand, it's been very successful. So year six, seven, eight, nine. What might that look like? Or are we going to wait till we finish the program until we start to figure out how to continue it? I don't think it's going to go away. We've had illegal dumping.
I think that's the whole point is we've been, you know, sort of compiling funds year after year, doing it, you know, one year at a time. So the idea is to really bring forward this this portfolio of what it might look like to really address it holistically. It's challenging running across departmental team. And because everybody's being pulled in different directions, we have staff changes, we've, you know, priority changes. So it's really difficult to kind of do it in this one every year, try to pull the team together and keep it going. So we're really looking at what is the long term suite of policy and funding and staffing decisions that need to be made? What are the interventions that are really critical for long term success? Because what we know is if we take our foot off the pedal, it's just going to go back to the way it was, right? So or so it'll be a decision about do we want to come in and and make something permanent and systemic happen?
And have you, has there been any state grants available around this or is the state not interested?
The state grants, Cal Recycle again, offer grants, but they tend to go to the bigger cities or to rural areas that have a lot of dumping on in rural areas. So we've never, all the grants we've looked at, we've never really been able to compete for them.
Okay.
To to date. No, I haven't paid it. That's why we want to do the landscape scan again, because we haven't looked at it in probably about a year. So maybe there's some new things coming up that I don't know about.
Yeah, and we can advocate at that time too with our state representatives. And then the final question, I know that any resident can report illegal dumping through reported problem or see click fix. Have you seen an increase over the most recent years of people using that? We want to have a very robust system, so they're not emailing us here or emailing you or the city manager, but we're really using that. Can you speak to how well that's been functioning?
Well, you know, the other thing is staff uses it as well. So sometimes when calls come in, we'll report it on see click fix as well. And so it's kind of hard to to separate. I know that I had a digital services, Sean Mooney was was talking about trying to get more people to utilize it in the public. And so we're all sort of making that part of our ongoing response, not to sound rude, but to be able to say thank you very much. And could, you know, if you would use this system, then it'll get in the queue and we can track it and we can actually demonstrate that we followed up on it. But I can't give you any data. Unfortunately, I don't know the data about that.
Okay, well, no, and that's that's a good message because we want it to be robust and we do need the data. So that those are the same emails that we send when people email us directly. We're not the most efficient people. It's better to go through the system. Well, fantastic. Appreciate that. And I appreciate Marin Sanitary being here as well as Garth. Ms. Garberino, would you want to come show your, I'll open up to public comment and you have your show and tell? Welcome.
Thank you so much. Thank you to Corey and thank you, Garth, for their reports. Attending with me tonight, it's important for me to introduce you to my colleagues. You've met Justin Wilcock, our general manager, Jason Raleigh is our CFO. Jennifer Grenier and Peggy Clark head up our outreach department of five. And Tasha Tolbert is our new director of people and does everything for us HR, which is wonderful. The I'm going to start off with what's old at Marin Sanitary Service. This is our seventy fifth year. So we culminate the celebrations by being with you here tonight and with the picture that I've got. What's new at Marin Sanitary Service is the ribbon cutting that some of you attended on March first with our two new pieces of technology, the optical sort, which is helping us greatly with especially the curbside recyclables. Given that during COVID, that whole stream changed dramatically and became far more contaminated. We actually went from a less than one percent contamination rate to close to fifteen percent, which is problematic for the ability for us to be able to market our recyclables. Our Tiger system is a new debugger that helps us bring in more organic material and is a phenomenal piece of machinery that actually it's a little bit like Charlie's Chocolate Factory where wood goes out here, plastic goes out here, cardboard out here. And out comes a pure stream to be able to go to CMSA to make energy, which tolerates very little contamination. So it was very important for us to put in that piece of machinery and and we foot the bill. That was a million dollars. So very worthwhile. We found it up in Anacortes. We also had our customer appreciation day in September and we had hundreds of people come down for tours with their children. It was fabulous. And of course, take away free compost. What's also new is we continue to investigate electrification of our vehicles. And probably, and we're doing a great deal of research on moving more to a hybrid from hydrogen biomass source to be able to fuel our vehicles well into the future. As you know, we're obligated to go to some extent to electric. But the payload that our trucks pull up those hills doesn't often allow us to be not only avail ourselves of that technology, but it's not yet developed in our industry to the full extent. And then with that, it's important to, as someone who is lucky enough to be at the head of a family business, to let you know that we actually have a family culture. And you might wonder where my ninety year old, very young father is. He's probably home watching Monday Night Football. And so we've allowed him to do that. On behalf of the two hundred and sixty one, thank you, employees, these are your drivers, and maybe you could show the audience as well, who start at three thirty in the morning, making sure. Thank you. Very nice. That the job gets done. They're very proud of what they do. And this was taken at three thirty in the morning. So I just had to share it. We pulled it off the wall in dispatch on our way out the door. So thank you. I'm very much available and at your disposal to answer any other questions and happy to do so. I might just add that the recycling efforts, while they do not always pay for themselves, because there's more hand touching of that material and more personnel involved. But it does protect and preserve landfill space for future generations. And that's what we're all about. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Patty. Thank you for the show and tell. Appreciate that. So I have opened up public comment if anyone would like to comment on this item. And feel free to identify yourself. You're not required to, but you'd like to. We'd like to know.
Hi, I'm Kingston Cole. I'm a resident of San Rafael. And I'm also on the Coalition of Sensible Taxpayers Board Directors. We are disappointed that the city is refusing to face up to its unjustified charges for a franchise fee and road impact fees. You are papering over this money grab with phony excuses, pulling administrative costs out of thin air, ginning up imaginary costs for renting out the roads for trash cans, which isn't even the cost for the waste hauler. You've never thought about the cost of service on the franchise fees until you realize we were scrutinizing you and your money grab. It's too late to cover up now. The road impact fees violate the vehicle code that guarantee free use of the roads. Half the costs of the road impact fees is directed to deferred maintenance and not to the impacts of garbage trucks. This is an illegal component of impact fees. To add insult, you have valued the use of space for garbage cans as if they were pop up restaurants. So yes, we are disappointed that you were pointing, you are pointing the finger of blame also at MSS, Marin Sanitary Service. You falsely claim that you are not responsible for charging. You falsely claim that you are not responsible for charging fees and point the finger of blame at MSS. Your resolution says you are not charging fees and the fault goes to MSS. This is untrue and unfair to them. It is the responsibility of the city to set fees and approve exactly what the fees will be. And that is the only reason for the hearing you are having tonight. If you think otherwise, should cancel this hearing and see what happens. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Cole.
Hello, my name is Grace Garrity and I'm a resident of Terre Linda for 26 years. I don't have any issues with rate increases when they are justified and when we see progress and progress. I don't quite understand why, and this is residential, why friends of mine who have ecology in Sonoma and also in San Francisco, they can recycle their milk bottles from Clover in wax. We can't. We can't recycle as many plastic. It's basically, as Councilmember Hill said, I think fives and number ones. We can't recycle the alcohol wrap or aluminum paper unless it's crystal clean. There's a whole bunch of stuff that they can recycle and we can't. And this has been going on for years and I don't see any improvements. So, you know, how, how can, and we're supposed to be in Marin, which is supposed to be advanced in all matters of ecology. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garrity. Anyone else? Okay, not seen anyone. I'll close public comment. And I think that's an excellent question. It comes up every year. Why does this agency or this place have seemingly different rules? And specifically, the question was around wax-based milk cartons and different types of plastic. So I don't know who can answer that. But I think it's a great question.
Thank you for this opportunity. Unfortunately, while I make it a point of not speaking on behalf of another company, a number of companies will sort of take an easy road and say, we'll take that material, when in fact, there is no market for that material. And unless we can be honest with you and put that back into a secondary use again, we just try to advocate our very best in Sacramento and in Washington to make sure that manufacturers are held responsible for the material that they create. And if plastics do not have a market, the public needs to know that. It's actually polluting not only our environment, but that's what brought down the Chinese sword in 2017. The third world does not want to be the place where they sort the United States garbage any longer just because it has a subsidy in the way of the bottle bill. So I, it's a soapbox for me. I know my father has always said, thou shall not make something that cannot be recycled, but plastics recycling is quite a myth.
And so does it go to landfill?
It goes to landfill. It should not be. If, if we, you talked earlier about what can we do to make things better in the recycling world? It would be to buy in glass. It's better for you as well. There's research that shows that levels of prostate and testosterone cancer, breast cancer are all enhanced sadly by the consumption of material that has been contained in plastics. So we need to do our very best to avoid, avoid its use.
Thank you for answering that question. Thank you. I will bring it back to the council for any, well, for additional comments and then a motion. I'll start with Councilmember Bushy.
No additional comment.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz?
Nope, just a huge thank you. I think over time we see the, when we talk about projects that have great success, there's a correlation to departments, multiple departments working together and great community partnerships. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
Yeah, again, just gratitude. Thank you Cory for the presentation. Thank you, R3 Consulting. And of course, thank you MSS for being a great partner to the city and its residents. Just a shout out, I, 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 every Monday night tonight is my recycling and processing night. So make sure that it goes out to the bin exactly as it should. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also thank Marin Sanitary Service. Congratulations on your 75 years. Thank you to Garth through RM for R3 Consulting. And I always appreciate this conversation because so often people put things in the trash and I just think, oh, it's all taken care of. And so what MSS has done, a really good job of connecting those dots for our community. And it actually goes somewhere. And you have a highly consumption, high consumption like we do here. There is a, there is a impact of that. And when you look at the cost, I thought, I really appreciated this slide. It was an additional $3 on average for a resident. And really, and that's in addition to the current. When you look at this service that is so critical to keeping our, well, just so critical to our community, it's still incredibly affordable, especially when you compare it to the other jurisdictions in Marin County as well as the other comparable cities. So, so thank you. With that, I would request a motion on this item. Madam City Clerk, do you want us to read it or do you want to read it?
If you could read that, please.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilmember Bushy.
I would be happy to. I move that we adopt the resolution authorizing maximum rates to be imposed and collected by Marin Sanitary Service for refuse and recyclable material collection and disposable, and disposal services to be effective January 1st, 2024, and determining that the city's franchise fees and, and refuse of vehicle impact fees are justified by the city's cost of providing solid waste services, reasonable charges for the use of city property for solid waste services, and the cost of addressing the impacts of solid waste refuse vehicles.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries 4-0. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Bidoff. We have another item on our public hearing and that is a report, Design Review Board and Planning Commission consolidation discussion. And I will turn it over to, oh, Madam City Clerk. Here, why don't we give, well, we'll give folks a moment to sneak out. All right. Thank you. I think we can go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Kate, members of the city council. My name is Lyndzilera. I'm the city clerk. And tonight I'll be presenting with my colleague Margaret Kavanaugh Lynch. She's the new planning manager as announced by, in the city manager's report tonight. We also have Laura Simpson, who's available virtually to answer any questions that might come up. She's our new interim community development director. And before you this evening is a discussion around a consolidation of the design review board and the planning commission. This isn't the first conversation that we'll be having at the city council. This conversation's been going on since around 2017, 2018. So I'm going to go a little bit back in time to 1977, when the design review board was first established. Excuse me. In 2018, the discussion started, 2017, 2018, discussion started around potentially dissolving the design review board or the creation of a design review board advisory committee. At that time, there was a series of staff reports that came to you from the community development department over the next couple of years. And in 2020, there was feedback that was provided by the city council to staff to explore a streamlined development review pilot program or program, directly in collaboration with the planning commission and the design review board and the community, which did take place. And in 2022, staff returned with an, with a recommendation to approve the streamlined development review one-year pilot program. And I'm going to go ahead and kick it off to Margaret, who's going to talk a little bit about state laws that have impacted the design review board as well as the outcome of our streamlined development review one-year pilot program.
Historically, cities were allowed to use more subjective language in the review of housing projects. Design review boards were integral to this dialogue. Before 2017, it was standard practice to have conversations about what was compatible and in context with the surrounding community. Starting in 2017, however, legislation such as SB 35 created a mandated ministerial, or what they call by right, process for qualifying residential developments that were basically two or more dwelling units and located near transit. Objective planning standards by state law now need to be prescriptive, meaning they cannot be subjective or structured to exercise any discretion. Since that time, several more state regulations have come into law requiring the use of objective design standards. Five or more were just signed by the governor in the last two months. All of the projects that qualify for this type of review now move forward without any hearings at all before any discretionary body of the city of Centerfell. In addition to these by right projects, SB 330, the Housing Crisis Act of 2019, set additional limitations on cities requiring discretionary applications. As you know, a total of five hearings may be held on an SB 330 compliant project. And that cap on hearings includes any possible potential appeals. So it's kind of always a sense of concern when you're looking at development projects, how you control the number of hearings on a project that has an SB 330 consistency finding. And as you know, the city staff created a streamlined review program for residential projects. Basically residential structures between three and 10 units or additions to multifamily residential structures between three and 10 units, where the addition constituted no more than 40% of the total square footage of the building and it wouldn't increase by three or more units. So we locally also looked at the regulations coming and streamlined, as, as referenced by the city clerk, certain projects that the city may have been interested in facilitating with proper review. All of these changes, in summary, both on the local level and on the state level, have resulted in a significant decrease in the purview of our design review board and therefore a significant number of cancellation of the board meetings.
Thank you. The proposed changes to the planning commission, if approved, we would be recommending changes to the membership and composition of the, of the planning commission as it stands now. Option one, this is going to be the slide. It's the only option that was presented in the staff report. I'm just going to go over what that was. It would be the current makeup of our planning commission, which includes four district representatives, two at-large members. Just for anyone who doesn't know, at-large members would be no additional eligibility requirements. They don't have to live in a specific district to apply to be appointed. They just have to be residents of the city of Centerfell. One licensed architect and then one alternate member, which would be required to be a licensed architect. Now, my next slide is going to go over option two. We did go back to the community and stakeholders, DRB, planning commission, and then listening to the community and the correspondence that we've all, you've all received and we've received as well. We wanted to propose a second alternative or a second option to the composition and membership of the planning commission, which would still include the four district representatives. It would have one at-large member, one licensed architect, one design professional, which there would be a preference here on landscape architect, licensed architect, urban planner, and then two alternate members, which would both be required to be licensed architects. The reason and the logic around the two alternate members being licensed architects is we want to build a bench of licensed architects. If there was a project that came forward to the planning commission and the licensed architect needed to recuse themselves because there was a conflict of interest, this protects that to make sure that we always have a licensed architect on the, on the planning commission. In addition, the way that Centerfell utilizes their alternates is they still participate in deliberation. They still participate in asking questions of developers. They'll still be involved in that process and have a lot of the expertise that the design review board did have. That'll still take place at the planning commission.
Going forward, if the council chooses to direct staff to do that this evening, the body of decision stipulated in the municipal code that currently takes a final action on development projects will continue to do so. Basically, for decisions made by the community development director and the zoning administrator, staff will be creating an on-call list of design professionals to assist as needed with architectural landscape analysis during the review of complex projects, meaning we would call, we'd have an on-call stable ready. And if we had a project that was complicated or complex, but still lent to a staff level decision, such as a zoning administrator or the director, we would bring them in early. We have some wonderful planning folks on your staff. I'm very, very honored to be working with them. But if we did need to deepen our bench, we would reach out and bring in a design professional to assist us in that. We would also bring those professionals to the hearing as held at the staff level for any questions that come up during the public hearing themselves. Likewise, at the planning commission, we, we would also have those design professionals present to respond to questions from any member of the community or the commission at that public hearing for, for projects to rise to that level of review. Excellent. So our recommendation this evening is to accept the report and provide to feedback, excuse me, provide feedback to the staff regarding how the city council would like us to proceed. And if you'd like to move forward with the recommendation, please direct staff on how you might want the commission's new composition to look and our eligibility requirements. And further, the roles and responsibilities of the planning commission so that we can allow the city to efficiently respond to the current development environment while ensuring that the process and quality of design review are not negatively impacted.
Great. Thank you, Margaret. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. We'll see if there are additional questions before we get to hearing from the public as well as our own comments. So I will start with former planning commissioner, Mary Beth Bushy.
Thank you. Let's, let's start with questions. I appreciate your option two. I think that better preserves what the design review process has, has meant to the, to this city. And I guess I will accept the mayor's invitation to discuss momentarily my, my background. On the city council or the city council, on the planning commission, I sat in those DRB meetings. I saw in real time what that board did for this city, the benefits that they brought to projects on the, you know, seemingly small design details that, that they would make these changes. And it was like, oh my goodness, this looks so much better. I know. My question, so I guess my question is, is there a possibility, sort of building on your option two, of having a as-needed option for hearings by the design professionals? Maybe like a design workshop on, on big projects?
Margaret, do you want to take that one?
So I have not been party to the conversation that brought you to this meeting this evening. My employment with the city of Centerfell is about a month long and it's a real honor and pleasure to be here. It's a balancing act, right? So if the, if it's a, if it's a project with any sort of housing in it, there's likely a clock running somewhere and there's definitely a limitation on what we can discuss anymore. It's, it's coming from outside, right? It's coming mostly from the state of California, binding the housing prices and making these, these regulations, which I neither love nor dislike, that they are what they are, right? So we can't, I've served on a planning commission in Elsabito for eight years as a volunteer. So I understand some of your, of what you're, of what you're looking at and what you're thinking about. It's, if it involves housing, it's going to involve how tall it can be, what the setback can be, quantifiable numbers only. So the days of us saying, you know, that color is just not going to work there are really over. And most of the projects we will see, so there's, there are projects that do not include housing and I don't mean to completely cover over that. But for by and large, what we're seeing, what would like, so the chances of us getting any new office buildings is very, very low, right? So we're looking at predominantly housing or mixed use, some industrial, but mostly the prior. In any meeting with a housing project, we're going to be trying to walk a fine line on what we can talk about and how many times we can have a meeting to talk about it. So it's, it's just, it's a tough situation to be in.
Thank you for your answer and I'll reserve the rest of my comments for later.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Hill also was on the planning.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I did serve on the planning commission. I will ask my question after I lay out the premise, which is in recent years, when I've watched the design review board meetings, I'm often struck by the directions that the commissioners or the, the members are provided to say, you can talk about this, you can't talk about that. And I just want to confirm with you that this is related to state law, that there are things that DRB can and can't do at this point since a lot of the legislation has passed.
That is correct. When it has any type of housing included, the basic rule is whether it's by right and we have no say, or it's discretionary and we have some say, we are now bound to objective design standards. So findings of compatibility, findings of how this project is in context with the community surrounding it, those type of findings are standards we can't use on those, on those projects any longer. The state of California has found those to be obstructions to housing development. And they've applied that interpretation. and they've applied that interpretation statewide.
And just to go one level deeper on that, to violate the law, what are the consequences?
What it can do is it will involve conversations with housing and community development. The way that housing is structured in the state of California now, there are carrots and sticks. So if the city is found to be not following these regulations, we will be having meetings with the housing and community development staff. If we can't come to an agreement on what we were trying to do, they will start to jeopardize all of our OAB grant funding, all of our grant funding, all the carrots that we use to do all of the really wonderful programs that are going to be coming before you and have come before you in years past, are all tied to us being in compliance with how the state of California runs these sort of projects. In addition, it can open us up after due process to litigation. So it can go downhill rather quickly.
And the project might get pushed through anyway?
Yes, yes. And I'm sure that the city attorney can tell you, but I believe that not only can it be pushed too quickly, but we are probably at risk of paying somebody's fees if we are taken to court for it afterwards. So it's challenging.
It came through public comment in writing about objective standards and enhancing our objective standards. Can you comment on other communities that have adopted, I would say, more aggressive objective standards to their benefit?
That's a very good question. In the month that I've been here, I have not had opportunity to do that level of research. I can tell you that the city of Centerfell does have objective design standards in its downtown precise plan. I was reading through the comments, and I made note that especially when planning commissioner mentioned, there's a lot of things that we should be looking to revise in that precise plan. And it's on my project list to talk to the city manager and how we're going to prioritize that. But we do have objective design standards in our downtown precise plan area already. We also have objective standards. The former director and staff have front-loaded a number of objective design standards into our current zoning code for the rest of the city under the development standards for each district, so residential districts, et cetera, et cetera. In addition, there was work done through a grant to augment those objective design standards for outside of the precise plan for gaps that the staff had identified. And there is some draft reports that we've got from a consulting firm to further fill in what we can fill in. And I just want to say, there is a sense of loss about what we used to be able to say about context and setting. But where we can apply a number to it, or apply an objective standard to it, two of those items are already in place, and the third item is something we are working to move forward.
Great. And by the way, thank you for answering all these, only being a month into your employ here with the city.
My pleasure.
I have one more question, which is, it's more of a detail, but I think it's an important one to make sure I'm getting this right. That among the option one and two, every member gets a full vote, except for when an alternate is in an alternate role. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtz.
Thank you for those who have been on the planning commission before, provided a lot of good direction. I think from the general questions from the community that I hear, is there's not much clarity from just the general member of the difference between the DRB and the planning, and when a project goes to DRB, and when a project goes to planning, and back and forth. So I think the proposal of consolidating makes sense. And I think you had just answered this in terms of you're moving from a five-member voting board? Or is it seven currently?
It's seven currently.
It's seven currently, and so it's going to stay at seven with two alternates?
That's correct. Currently, there's seven members and no alternates on the planning commission. So it would be seven members, but would have the two design professionals, one licensed architect, one design professional. That's option two, of course. And then two alternate members, which would be required to be licensed architects.
I do like the consideration for option two, so thank you for adding that.
Thank you. I also want to follow up on the questions around the objective design standards. And this is such a different conversation from when I think when we joined the planning commission back in, I don't even know when that was, 2007, 2007, a long time ago. So two comments on that, two questions. One is, does the state dictate those at all? The objective design standards? Or do we have, within the very narrow confines, are we the ones that create them, or is the state... So they're 100% created by the local jurisdictions?
Correct. So it's based on our general plan, first and foremost, and then the toolkit, which is the zoning code or the downtown precise plan, is how that folds into one another. The general plan will give us the density. The zoning code or the precise plan will talk about what that form looks like. And to that commissioner's comment that was sent in tonight, there may be some confusion about how density bonuses might affect it. But generally speaking, to answer your question, yes, we have everything to say about how tall it is, and what kind of footprint it takes, and the divisions between buildings when they get too long, or how the windows look, as long as it's a measurable standard.
Okay, so, thank you. So locally, currently, our design, our objective design standards are embedded in our general plan or through our zoning already. So if we go and change them or modify them, does the state require that we approve them again? Because we just got our housing element approved. We just got it. But so are they going to say, so if we go and change two sentences, are they going to ask us, are they going to ask to look at our general plan and to look at our housing element to make sure that they're in compliance with what the state is mandating?
To my knowledge and in my experience, as a planning manager or as a planner, they do not come back, it would not open up our housing element. It would not open up our general plan. They may reach out and ask to see them, but that would not open the Pandora's box of a larger topic, in my understanding.
Okay. No, and that's comforting, because this is new. We're not the only agency or city grappling with all this. So I was concerned that the state would continue to, well, just be stringent about what we can do. Okay. Well, I'm sure there are going to be other comments from the public. And as Councilmember Hill said, we did receive some emails already and letters, and we always appreciate that. So in addition, I'm now open up public comment to those in the room that would like to comment on this item. And again, we're just receiving input, we're giving direction, but there's no final decision. This will come back again in January. So come on down if you're interested. Ms. Garrity, it looks like you're getting ready to speak. Come on down. Oh, sorry. Take your time.
Well, I'm Grace Garrity, and I do appreciate option two, but I am still against eliminating the design review board. I agree with Commissioner Mercado that the planning commission members are not design experts. Instead, they handle policymaking decisions and rely heavily on the DRB's design expertise and experience. The idea of simply adding an architect and an alternative architect, and in the prior proposal, there was no landscape artist, I think would simply lengthen the planning commission meetings and worse, not really provide to the developers clear and concise direction regarding design from professionals for improving their designs so that our city is aesthetically attractive and not just a mishmash of development. Second reason is that there are concrete and strict criteria for applying and being appointed to the DRB. The only criteria for applying and being appointed to the planning commission is that you have to live in Centerfell for one year. Submitting a resume is optional, and the city staff does not vet all the information provided by applicants. Couple of years ago, several community groups, including RGM, vetted all the candidates applying for the planning commission and found that several people had lied. The companies they stated they worked for didn't exist, and they had no qualifying skills besides wanting to give back to the community, which is very noble, but not helpful. I also agree with the DRB member Lexon, because we do have to encourage and guide development of functional, attractive, commercial residential buildings. And Centerfell has a downtown plan, but the rest of us do not have, the rest of Centerfell, and we don't have objective standards. A lot of other Marin cities rushed to get their objective standards last year to exactly help instead of Sacramento controlling it, allowing the cities to have more individual control. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, thank you, Ms. Garrity.
My name's Matt Butler, and I am a pro-housing citizen of Marin County in Centerfell. Societies do fail. Civilizations fall apart. And the main driving factor of that is inequity, inequality. We have severe housing inequity and inequality here in Centerfell. The rest of the state recognizes that. The rest of the country recognizes that. The rest of the world recognizes that. And this is how you destroy a democracy, is by trying to maintain your iron grip on the supply of housing in a community that is desperately in need of more housing. It is unsustainable, it is undemocratic, and it's a shame that California's constitution was written by white supremacists, and there is no constitutional right to housing in this state. And that is something to be ashamed of. I hope that each and every one of you will realize the great stress, pain, and damage you do to our community by squelching and stopping housing. Housing is important, housing is vital, and a successful, healthy democracy cannot survive without it. The witch is dead, the war is over. There will be more legislation allowing housing to be built. And it's time to put away your axes and pick up some hammers and start building houses. Very important.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. And just a reminder, the city does not build housing developers do. Ms. Powers, welcome.
Mayor and councilmembers, thank you for this opportunity to comment. I'm concerned about the city's proposal to remove the DRB and instead add either one or two architects to the planning commission and alternates. This leaves the urban design of the city up to developers at a time when development is accelerating. The primary motivation of most developers is financial and to serve the interests of investors. The role of Centerfell's design review board has been very different than that of the planning commission. The planning commission is tasked with ensuring that projects adhere to Centerfell's general plan policies and programs, ordinance and zoning. The value of the DRB is to use the committee members' expertise to evaluate the design of proposed projects that will hopefully result in improvements that are both visually and functionally appropriate, that have consistency or are in relationship with adjacent development. As well as that, there are provisions for access on local streets and parking, as well as other elements in the project planning. The proposed dissolution of the DRB comes at a time when Centerfell has yet to complete its development of objective design and development standards. The county and other jurisdictions throughout the county have done so in order to have local sway over how they will weather the advantages handed down through recent state housing legislation to developers. The proposed dissolution of DRB by the city concentrates decisions about the future of the city in the hands of a few. This will greatly reduce opportunity for broader representation. I request that the city postpone its consideration of this item, that members of past and current DRB and planning commission members, as well as more members of the public, have more time to comment on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Powers.
Good evening, everyone. Happy holidays. My name is Susan Coleman. I'm a 21-year resident of Terre Linda. I'm a member of Responsible Growth in Marin, Terre Linda Neighborhood Association. I'm also a full-time Realtor active for 21 years here in Marin. I'm speaking tonight for myself, and I'm dismayed that the issue is being considered so close to the holidays. Like Kate, I would love to see things delayed a bit for more community engagement on this issue. In the seven years I've been involved in neighborhood activities in Terre Linda, I valued the vital design input that the DRB has contributed to the entire planning process. I'd suggest that one of the reasons Centerfell has cultivated such a desirable town character, really, is a direct result of the contribution made by the experienced and dedicated members of the design review board, who are themselves qualified professionals. I think it's resulted in projects actually being more valuable to the property owner and more harmonious with the character of the surrounding areas. I think that's a win-win for everybody. I'm wondering if an advisory role, I realize that they can't dictate to the extent that they used to, but an advisory role and an observational role might still be helpful to people who are listening. The changes being mandated in our city and across all jurisdictions in California make the input from a group like the DRB all the more critical and valuable. We're tasked for fitting in a lot of housing in unprecedented numbers, and these new buildings can add to the wonderful character of Centerfell if they're designed with a sensitivity to the surrounding homes and buildings to the extent possible. Take a look at Gerstle Park. Before the DRB, you had these beautiful vintage homes with these fourplexes and apartment buildings slipped in, wedged in, between these beautiful vintage homes. That stopped, and that area has become so much more desirable as a consequence and more harmonious. So I think that's a great thing to shoot for. I urge you to retain the full design review board as it's currently compromised and not diluted. Thank you. Happy holidays.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Anybody else? Ms. Fisher, welcome.
Thank you. Shirley Fisher, Terre Linda. Good evening. I want to talk to you about the process by which this proposal came to see you tonight. Tonight's proposal is a step, when I was chosen Citizen of the Year in 2021, I praise Centerfell's commitment to citizen participation and decision-making. Tonight's proposal is a step in the opposite direction. The proposal was devised by developers and business organizations, and without input from community residents. The timing is particularly exquisite, since on September 6th, the design review board made recommendations on the North Gate Square project, many of which reflected community concerns and many of which were objective. To date, these recommendations have not been recorded in writing, nor conveyed to the planning commission, and all subsequent meetings of the DRB were canceled. From the outside view, this appears that the city is aligning with developers and business interests rather than community interests, and that the DRB is being ignored and dissolved because you don't like their recommendations. It's up to you to change its perception. You are about to process approval of one of the largest development projects in Marin County, a big housing development that has not been opposed by the members of the community, including Responsible Growth Marin. You are creating a new urban neighborhood and a suburban community. It's critical for North Gate to be well-designed, including as a full-service community where residents do not need to get in their cars to go get groceries and services. You need to postpone tonight's proposal and maintain the input of a full design review board, at least until this massive project is fully reviewed. The DRB recommendations of September 6th must be correctly conveyed in writing to the planning commission. And concurrent with the EIR review project, a review of this project, public hearings must be scheduled on the entitlements and merits of the project, which is where many of the issues raised by the community and the design review board will be addressed. Do you actually care about citizen engagement? Please demonstrate that you do.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Appreciate it. Anybody else, before I close the public comment? Okay, not seen anyone else. Thank you for your comments. We will close the public comment. I think there's some questions that were in there, maybe some other responses. One was, is there an advisory role? I don't know if that goes towards, I'm kind of looking at both of you, if that goes towards counting towards the number of meetings. So maybe you could speak, I'm not sure what advisory role, but I thought that was an interesting comment. And then there were questions just now, very specifically about North Gate. And that is a very unique project, and how can the design standards and everything else be applied to North Gate? Because I think there's some concern about that timing. But I know we can't talk about North Gate, because that's not what was on the agenda tonight. But maybe you can talk about that in kind of broad. There was a comment of that our objective designs, and I think there's more clarity. You had mentioned, Margaret, in your comments, that there are some objective design standards that are embedded in our housing element, but are they not codified enough to qualify as the kind that the state has looked at? So maybe you could clarify. And then lastly, is there a possibility to have input until February? So people have additional four weeks to write letters and meet with us and do all that good stuff? So those are the questions. Take them in any order.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The first thought I have is an advisory body that would offer designer view is exactly what you have today. Right? So that's the...
Well, I think it was on-call was more the difference. It would be an on-call. It's the same thing, so maybe it's just semantics.
Yeah, I think so. It's the danger of the people's business is done in a public setting. So that would have a... So that would have a design review board-like setting. It would be at a public meeting and we're back at the concerns that have come up for the city in the past.
Can I add one thing to that, Margaret, before you go to the next question? One of the things we've talked about as staff is to make sure there is design professional and expert input on some of these complex projects is that in context of the hearings, if the council were to consolidate the Planning Commission and DRB, that city staff could hire experts in these areas that would come to a hearing and provide education for both the community and, you know, on a particular project, whether it's a landscape or some unique aspect of the project. So, so in order to maintain those five meetings, and that could be a practice that we incorporate, bringing an expert consultant to provide, you know, you mentioned a workshop, if you will, if it was done in context of that meeting to provide that expertise in context of the project moving forward is something that we've talked about as a way of meeting that, that design need.
So just to build on that before we get to the other ones. So what I hear you saying is that there could be a possibility to almost reformat the way that we do planning commissions or adding workshops in order to still have that opportunity for the design input from professionals to occur, professionals, but in this case like volunteers.
Exactly. And that there could be, you know, questions to those experts specifically around that particular project, but in context of that, of that meeting around that project to keep us within the five meetings.
But we could commit to having the opportunity, to almost reformatting the way the planning commission meeting's going. So there's almost a design segment to really get at that specific input and have the kind of little bit of the separation between the policy conversation.
Exactly.
So that's what staff's been thinking. Okay. So going back to the other, let me see. The objective design standards that were possibly embedded or put in the forefront of the housing element, if you could speak to that again.
Yeah, absolutely. I may have misspoke. What I wanted to say, so the general plan of which the housing element is one of the chapters is the framing document for the land use vision of the city of San Rafael, right? So in there, you'll find our density discussions, maximum density per district or designation in a general plan. The zoning code implements the general plan. It takes all of its authority from, basically it's just a tool to make the general plan hopefully move forward. And as you said, the city can't build housing, but that's the, that's the rulebook that has been created to help developers and anyone else who can build housing know what we need to see in order to be able to support it, right? So we have the height and the setbacks and what we call the development standards, the envelope in which we need the development to occur. The objective develop, design standards appear in our zoning code. And just to break into planning, break out of planning speak for a minute, there's a general plan. The zoning code is nothing but a tool of the general plan. It's very complicated and it keeps a lot of planners employed and it keeps a lot of attorneys employed, but it's, it's a series of rules. And the precise plan, the downtown precise plan is a kind of a cousin of the general plan. It doesn't prevail over the general plan, but it's above the zoning code. And it has, San Rafael has a very advanced precise plan that brought a form-based code and some policies and talks about how the urban environment can be put together. Kind of in a way, kind of front-loading how to do urban context once you take away the ability to talk about context and compatibility. So that's how all those play together. We have objective design standards in the zoning code. We have maximum standards of density in the general plan. That's where I was going with that. And we have form-based code, objective design standards, which are very dry in the precise plan for the downtown area. So that's how those all.
So we do have objective design standards today?
Yes, you do.
Okay. You do. There was a comment that we didn't and so you're clarifying that we do have some of those. Okay. And then the last question, just about the, or two more questions about the North Gate project. And I'm not sure, I know we have to be careful.
I'll start on this one.
Yeah.
I'll answer it as a process question.
Process, yes.
So if any project were to move through the DRB, there would be minutes and recommendations and those recommendations would move forward to the Planning Commission in the form of the staff report for that Planning Commission meeting. So anything that came out of a project, a specific project meeting from the DRB, those recommendations would, are most definitely documented, would move forward to the Planning Commission regardless of the decision you would make in the future about DRB. Does that answer the question?
Yes, thank you. And then the last about input, Madam City Clerk? Additional four weeks? It's going to be the holidays?
Yes, we were planning for January 16th. Ultimately, we could go to, and let me just say, January 16th would be, we would be hoping to bring an ordinance to the city council. It would be the first public hearing of a series of two. So then it would be the first meeting in February for the second reading, another opportunity for public comment. We're happy to move that to the first meeting in February to allow for additional public comment to be received.
I think that would be a great, a great thing to do. Okay, so let me turn it to my colleagues for additional comments and questions. Councilmember Bushy?
I actually have a question.
Okay, great.
So Margaret, help me with your five, you have five meetings. You have to save one for appeal, one for us, the city council, one for the Planning Commission. At least two, couldn't one of those two be DRB?
Conceptually, yes, absolutely. However, when you have a complicated or complex planning project, the Planning Commission oftentimes will hold a workshop and talk about the project in that way and kind of, so especially, I'm actually trying, I'm enjoying the vision of how this might look. So say a complex project comes to the city of San Rafael and it's got a lot of parts and pieces. It probably wasn't something that a commission could approve or deny on one hearing, right? But in this, if the council decides to go forward, you'll have your seven-person commission and then you'll have these alternates. So you'll have up to four design professionals asking questions, right? They participate fully. I heard the city clerk say. So you'll have a very robust planning commission that has people that have been serving there that understand policy and understand what we're looking at in that direction. And you'll have this bench of architects and landscape architects or urban planners or other design professionals that'll be asking questions regarding the objective design standards. So I just, I haven't seen a city function with that kind of full bench before on a major development project. So that, that makes me smile because the staff would only bring a project when we think it's ready for recommendation for approval or denial. That's our job. That's what you ask us to do is to make the projects, make the findings on projects one way or another. So if you start looking at two meetings for a planning commission and then one or two meetings for the city council, because a number of things are coming up, there's controversy, there's items that maybe the commission fleshed out, but in the recommendation they ask you to opine on. Now you're looking at maybe one hearing for your council, maybe two to try to solve it and bring it all together. And now you have to act on that appeal in one hearing. So it's, it's not undoable. The state did not leave us with three hearings, but five is very short when you're looking at something complicated.
But your vision just has DRB and the Planning Commission accomplishing their same level of review, only doing it all at once. So.
Oh, sorry. I was, I thought the city manager was going to say something. So, right. The Planning Commission would be bringing on design professionals to utilize all the objective design standards we could do each project. They're all based on the zone district that they're located in. So yes, they would be doing the role of both as much as the bylaws allow them to do.
Thank you.
Mayor Kate, if I may also just add to just a few things about the current Designer View Board. I think right now the requirements and eligibility requirements for the DRB are that there be two licensed architects and one landscape architect. The others, just we hope to have a background or some experience. And sometimes we are really recruiting, right now we have a great group, but there have been times where we're really, we're pushing to try to find that licensed architect pretty hard. So it's going to be based on option two. It is almost more similar to the current makeup of our Designer Board, but I believe that there was of course, some correspondence I had received indicating that the majority of or all of DRB is licensed architects. That's not the eligibility requirement.
Thank you. Now we'll shift to comments.
Please.
My comments are that I support efficiency in government operations and streamlining as a general concept. And our city clerk has brought forward many very good proposals and this is probably one of them. I'm concerned though that maybe now isn't the time, the right time for this because as, you know, brave and courageous as Margaret is here a month. And our interim Community Development Director is available, but we don't have a permanent director. So we have big staffing changes. At the same time, we have, as Shirley correctly described, probably the biggest project that's occurred certainly in San Rafael, maybe in Marin in decades underway. And we have another big project coming forward in Dominican. So we have all of these things happening and in the middle of that to change our process and our structure, which I believe has worked very well for decades and it may be because the law has changed that it's time for the process to change as well. I'm not sure that now is the time to do that because of these staffing changes and, and big projects coming through. So I would recommend that we pause this probably for several months to let these big projects move forward, to get our staff settled in and hire a Community Development Director that can bring forward a vision of how this would work in the real world that could give us confidence that we would be maximizing the impact that our design professionals can have and our design input can have on all of the projects that are going forward in San Rafael in the current legal context.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Margaret, for answering all these questions. I concur with Councilmember Bushy and her points. I would also add to her points that I think I would like not only a delay, but also an analysis of what are the opportunities for objective design standards that we could make more robust than they are today? I have an idea that right now the DRB does provide that function as often limited as it is by state law. I think that it serves two functions, A, for the community to hear their thoughts and direction on it, but also in the absence of objective standards, we do need, we do get some value even if the state is regulating it. So I would also like an analysis of what are the opportunities for objective design standards before we would formally remove the DRB as it currently sits. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz?
Thank you. I'm actually probably a little bit on the other side. Even though I haven't been on Planning Commission or DRB prior to be on council, I have been a program manager and project manager with major, major projects with people from all over the world. And I know that there is a lot of synergy when you bring everyone around the table at the same time for that consistency, for the need to streamline. There is also a cost savings because you're not running too, it's administrative, but you're running two different project teams and, you know, doing, having to have it be disconnected. So I always say, let's have a holistic evaluation and have everyone around the table and, and be able, people self-select if they don't want to be part of that table. But I think it's really important to have the same conversation at the same time. Also, I'm concerned the state is in front of us. The state is really very, very clear about the need for housing and is making very, very clear decisions around that, that the jurisdictions are having to follow. And I think that this recommendation and proposal helps get in front of that to provide more control, allow us to have some more control in terms of the work that we need to do in the best way we can do it. Because I'm, if we're already limited by five meetings, what if they say there's only four? And then what are we going to do? So we're, we shouldn't have to look to that. We should be in front of these types of changes. And I think that this is one recommendation that would do it. I do support Councilmember Hills. We need to look more at our design objectives and design standards and the precise plans. I feel like so many of them are written as suggestions and not necessarily requirements. And so that's something, as I was doing my research around this this week, I did look, now granted, it was in South Carolina. They don't have a Planning Commission or a DRB. They, it's all, every, all the decisions are made by the staff. And I was thinking, okay, well, that's one extreme. We definitely don't want to go to that extreme because it's really important to have the.
Excuse me, excuse me. Go ahead, Councilmember Kurtz. Last. Excuse me, Mr. Butler. You had your opportunity. Councilmember Kurtz, go ahead. Okay. Go ahead. I think I lost my train of thought. I'm sorry. You want to take a moment?
No, I just, I mean, I think the message is really there that for me, I am concerned with the state. And, and yes, and I think our council has been very clear in the interest of wanting to support housing. We have done that and I think where I was at was really the more we can tighten up our standards looking across all of San Rafael and fine tuning those, we can let some of, use the expertise of our Design Review Board members and architects and landscape architects and all the rest to tighten that up. We won't have as many questions and variability in terms of the designs that come forward. So I think that would help. So I appreciate the recommendation coming forward. I do think we can give more time for the community to provide some input. Again, it's not, I don't think any of our processes or changes are saying the community is not going to be allowed input. That's not what, where we're at. We're trying to work within some of the guidelines that have been pushed through by the state.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Thank you, Margaret. Thank you, Laura. I was reflecting on the fact that your first slide said the DRB was created in 1977 and we don't do business the way that we did in 1977. So how do we continue to evolve? And San Rafael has been trying to tackle this in 2017, 2018, 2020 and 2021. We've been trying to get at the fact that the council, our staff approves developments time after time and they're not getting built. So when the plant, the Community Development Director at the time brought forward a whole menu of different options. So this option was on that menu back in 2017. And it really is, how do we continue to both work with the community to have the development we want, get the input we want? And since 2017, we now have all these new state laws. We didn't even know that was coming. So I do believe that we need to evolve. Having said that, I think we can take more time. I don't think there's a critical path. It's not a year, maybe it's a couple of months, maybe it's coming back in June. I think we do have some major projects here. And I do believe there's a perception that community wouldn't be able to give input if we started to move towards dissolving it. I think that's an inaccurate actually perception, but perception is reality to many people. And so having the opportunity to take a pause and to do the analysis that Councilmember Hill and Councilmember Kurtz talked about, I think there needs to be education about objective design standards. I was very involved with the downtown precise plan and there were many, many meetings on it. And that's, so I think that would be a critical part of it. And I liked your vision, Margaret, that you started to talk about and your excitement you got about the workshops. So there have been times in the city history where we've had Planning Commission and DRB come together and they work through a project together, really big projects. And I think that was even talked about for North Gate. And it's exactly trying to get at that, it's the best of both worlds. What I've seen at the DRB meetings is that many of the questions that they get asked are beyond their purview because they're general plan policy related, which doesn't feel good for the developer, certainly doesn't feel good for the community because they're coming up and asking about parking spaces and the DRB is wanting to talk about paint colors or, you know, setbacks. And so I think there's a disconnect there that I do believe bringing them together will eliminate that disconnect. And I know people walk out of those DRB meetings incredibly frustrated because they showed up, they're here for the evening, they give their input and yet the DRB can't respond to it because it's a planning commission issue. So I do think there should be an evolution in terms of our public, public planning process, but I don't think we have to put the accelerator on it. I mean, it's been around since 1977, even though this was started in 2017. So we've been at it for six years. And so for me to wait another six months to make sure that we get it right and that we continue to have that community input and kind of the comfort level and that kind of broader education would be, I think, really, really important going forward. And I'm sorry, Mr. Butler left because I did want to close by saying, I'm really proud of the fact that San Rafael has been a pro housing city. When you especially stack this up against our neighbors in Marin County, we have been pro housing and maybe not everyone agrees with that, but I look at the housing that has been brought into our community and enables our community to continue to be vibrant, it enables it to be diverse and we need to continue to have the right kind of development come in. It's not just opening up the doors, come and build, but we've had a really nice. It's not just opening up the doors, come and build, but we've had a really nice guiding and leading where and working with our developers. So I'm hoping that will continue through whatever process we ultimately adopt. I don't know if there are any other, is this enough input? You've got a earful. And I also, it would be really great to, if if community members who have are listening would like to provide more opportunity after they've thought about what they've heard here and and from the community, where they could email, who would you like them to email so they can continue part of the conversation?
Yeah, they can email me at city.clerk@cityofsanrefel.org. And we can make sure that that's incorporated in any future staff reports, the correspondence that we received.
Okay. Is that great? Wonderful. Thank you, Margaret. I can't wait to see what you're going to do in your next month. This is what you did in your first month. So thank you so much. There is a motion on this one. I request a motion on this item.
I'll make the motion to accept report and provide feedback to staff.
Sir, second. Moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy. Councilmember Hill. Councilmember Kurtz. Mayor Kate.
I, that motion carries four zero. Thank you so much. Okay, thank you. We have two more items, other agenda items. We have the City Councilmember Appointment to Committees for twenty twenty four. As everyone heard at the beginning of the meeting, it's not just the dais work. It's every day, every night, every afternoon work that we're doing. And so we have, we rotate those appointments. And I don't know who I turn that to, the documents in the, okay. It's okay, I turned to those. So there's probably no questions. So I'll open public comment. This is on the City Councilmember Appointments to Committees for twenty twenty four. Okay, not seeing any. I will close the public comment. There were no questions that were raised, and I would offer if there's a motion. And I do want to acknowledge that our current vice mayor was, she had a family issue, emergency that arose at the last minute. So she's not here, but I want to give her a big shout out. She was an incredible vice mayor, standing in and representing the city when I wasn't able to be at events and providing direction. So I wanted to make sure to say that. And.
I move that we approve the appointments to committees for twenty twenty four.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy. Councilmember Hill. Councilmember Kurtz. Mayor Kate.
I, that motion carries four zero. I realize I jumped the gun because I was assuming that the committee report included this, but the vice mayor is called out separately. So this agenda item is the elected vice mayor for twenty twenty four. The current recommended action is to elect vice mayor, Councilmember Eli Hill. So unless. Well, no, we have public comment. Oh, sorry. Yep. So public comment on this item. Not seeing any, there was a thumbs up, let the record reshow. I'm going to close the public comment and return it. Now I'll say my comments. Thank you, Vice Mayor, who's not able to be here for your great work.
And I'll make a motion to approve appointment of Eli Hill as vice mayor for twenty twenty four.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy. Councilmember Hill. Councilmember Kurtz. Mayor Kate.
I, that motion carries four zero. Congratulations, Vice Mayor Hill. Okay, so the last item we have is open time for public expressions. This is anything for that's not on tonight's agenda. Come on down. Hi, Ms. Fisher. Welcome.
Back again. This, this is also an issue about public engagement. It has to do with the format of the meetings. On October sixteenth, two thousand twenty three, in response to the Zoom bombing, San Rafael suspended public comment by Zoom and telephone required citizens to read staff reports and submit public comment within the seventy-two hour period from when the staff report is released to when the meeting happens or to come in person and get these two minutes to talk. It puts a really hard burden on people to be able to work in that type of short timeframe. The other jurisdictions such as Mill Valley have also similarly restricted Zoom participation, but they found workarounds remedies that continue to allow robust citizen participation. So I would ask that you look at the model of Mill Valley and see if it might be possible to implement a similar system here in San Rafael. My remaining minute, Mill Valley's public comment policy states in part, each, they allow email comments real time in the meetings. Each individual is limited to one e-comment per agenda item. All additional e-commerce are sent by the same individual and same agenda will be read out loud, will not be read out loud, but will be put in the record. Staff will read each e-comment into the record for no longer than two minutes. Please limit your e-comment to two hundred, two hundred fifty words. As this is the approximate word count of reading aloud for two minutes, all e-commerce will be included in the entirety and public record of the meeting. This is a Marin IJ article of October fourteenth, twenty twenty three. I don't think this is an excessive burden for staff. I think this is something that will allow more public input and just for spur of the moment things that come to people's mind that they really want to say at the meeting, but they, they're home. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Okay.
Before I start, I was just curious why was the public comment period moved to the end of the meeting? It used to be at the beginning of the meeting. It makes it really hard for people to participate and plan their evenings.
Thank you. You can pull up the microphone. Yeah, so the floor is yours.
Okay, hi, my name is Ron Pierre Guitard. I live up on Highland Avenue. I've been there for about ten years, and I'm here to express my concerns about the proposal by Dominican Valley LLC to develop the Dominican parcel. I have two things that I'd like to say, I'd like to ask you to please direct staff to find that the application as submitted is not complete because the developer has refused basically to agree to the indemnity provision that is required by the city and which any of us would be required to sign. He signed it under protest, which basically means he can walk away from it if he wants. And the second thing I'd like you to direct staff to find that these, well, the developer has asked that he be able to use the builder's remedy. And I'd like you to direct staff that this remedy is not available in this project because City of San Rafael had approved its housing element well before the project was, the preliminary application was filed. And on a second basis, that you do have the right, even if you find that the housing element issue was resolved in favor of the developer, you do have a right under the code to deny this builder's remedy because this project would present substantial public safety issues that cannot be resolved, we believe, in any suitable way. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. And actually, in open time, we can't direct a staff to do anything, but they're here and they're listening, as are we, just to be clear. There's no direction that we can give. Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you.
Can you pull up the microphone? Sorry, just, there you go, so we can hear you better. There you go.
It's not staying.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine.
How's this? Better?
Yeah.
Thank you so much for having me. I have a lot more confidence in your ability to hear us tonight after listening to you, your good questions, and I think relevant comments, as well as a healthy level of discourse between you all makes me more confident that you'll also listen to us. So my name, Kim Crawford, again, I'm a resident and a steering committee member of Save Dominican Valley. We have approximately five hundred residents now that are following us very closely. We're growing quickly, and we want to work with you in making the best decisions for our own city and our community we care very much about. We would like you, as our representatives, to represent our best interests. And we are here today to ask you to keep us safe. We are here to protect our existing community and the decades of code that has shaped our community. And we also know that builder's remedy being enforced now, in addition to SB three thirty being approved, is a huge nightmare, probably, for all of you, given the amount of requirements that it takes to get into compliance and to then ultimately deliver. That being said, we are, we have covered in two letters now to the city why SB three thirty and builder's remedy should not apply. We reference code and language from governing authorities that should make you, the city, very comfortable saying SB three thirty and builder's remedy do not apply. Please take those letters, and there'll be more to come. As a gift from us, we funded them independently as a way of helping the city stand up against the community, against one developer, one development. There are two important points that I will cover right now.
Go ahead, because you had to deal with the microphone. Just finish your final thoughts.
The first is builder's remedy does not apply. We outlined that in the letter. And the second is that the state law provides that a city and county may adopt its own findings and explain why the housing element is substantially client compliant with state law despite HCD's findings. A BAG has specific language on this, which is published. So you can, and we would much appreciate it, if you could please find that builder's remedy does not apply because it doesn't. And we have significant evidence to support that and many, many members. So we'd like you to 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 think more about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. Anybody else?
Yes, hi. My name's Ronald Kleiman. I live in San Rafael, and I'd like to speak specifically about some of the safety issues involved with the Dominican Valley project. I'm concerned both about the number of units and especially about where they're placed, especially the six duplex units that are being proposed to be placed along Margarita Drive. As you may be aware, this section of Margarita Drive is really a single lane road that's used for two-way traffic. One side of the road is a deep gully for water drainage, and the other side is a slope down to the valley with no shoulder except for wood chippings. Not only is it a narrow road, but it is also a series of S-shaped blind turns right where the units are being proposed to be placed. Right now, if two cars meet in this section of the road, one has to back up or back down to the nearest intersection for the others to pass. This is quite tricky, especially at night, since it means backing up around the blind curves without going into the ditch. And every year, at least one car will take a turn too narrowly and get stuck in the gully and need to be towed out. PG&E has already replaced one power pole that was too badly damaged by a truck, only to have a new one run into within six months of its placement. And any work that's done along the road requires that the road be closed to traffic. How is this road going to handle the number of trucks and equipment needed for the proposed job? And once completed, how are cars going to be able to pull into or back out of driveways on this blind section of road? And where are the cars going to park? There's no on-street parking available, and any unit with adolescent children has at least two cars these days. The proposed number of units brings a significant burden and impact on the safety of the neighborhood and needs to be scaled back. In addition, any proposed work needs to include an upgrade to the existing road infrastructure.
If you could finish your comments, Mr. Kleiman, just finish. Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, Dave, David Wolfensberger. I live on Locust Avenue. This summer, we were blessed with having our sewers replaced, as you may or may not know. But it gives us a shining example of what's to come if you if you approve this project. We've had tons of construction, large construction vehicles, lots of materials, dragged up Locust. Locust has no sidewalks. We have very few lights, no speed bumps, very few stop signs. So if it's not Locust, it could be Margarita, Highland, Summit. All of these streets are just not meant for more and more traffic, let alone just to day-to-day, two cars going by with people walking. It's it's dangerous, and you need to think about us. I know you want to check a box and say we got more housing, and I admit, we need it, we know that. But this isn't the place for fifty more units. So I ask you to scale it way back. And when you do, I need you to consider that who put this upon us without anyone knowing about it, and that's Dominican University. So this is a logical thing for me in my mind, safety. You can ram all of the construction vehicles and the material delivery right through the university. Why? There's sidewalks, there's stop signs, speed bumps, the roads are wide, and they can go straight up into that open area at the, at Deer Park. So you, they have to reap what you sow, and they did this to us. And so I need you, and I'm asking you respectfully, to look out for us and our safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolfensberger. Anybody else like to come on down?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers and everyone else. My name is Belle Davis, and I, my family has lived in the neighborhood above Dominican for more than twenty years now, I believe. I am also going to express concerns about the proposed Dominican Valley development, as some of my neighbors have. I grew up in this neighborhood, as I said, I'm very familiar with the environment and its inherent safety hazards. The density of the proposed development will increase traffic on the roads around my family's home by roughly one hundred and twenty cars. And this isn't even to mention the delivery services utilized by every household today. Most of these roads are not even two lanes wide, as my neighbor Ron said, and these roads have collapsed during storms a number of times since my family moved there. Part of Highland Avenue is still closed due to storm-related damage from last year. This demonstrates the difficulty in maintaining infrastructure in this area. These roads cannot currently manage the vehicular and pedestrian traffic they have. Another issue with the capacity of our neighborhood's roads is their ability to provide safe access for emergency vehicles. Our home and those of others in our community have been within five hundred feet of fires multiple times in the past ten years. And while local fire response has been incredible, at more than one point, the, excuse me, the responders needed to use private driveways because Deer Park and Margarita were unable to handle their trucks. Further car congestion would prevent even greater issues in access for emergency vehicles, and it would also inhibit evacuation efforts, as witnessed in the deadly campfires in which people could not escape and were burned in their cars. I understand that the Bay Area and California as a whole need more housing, and I support the creation of new homes for my fellow Californians. The proposed density and location of this new development presents a danger to pre-existing residents as well as to the community that would grow within the new subdivision. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Hi, can you hear me?
I sure can.
My name is Ann Springgate. I live on Maranita Avenue, which is a very small one-way lane right next to, or very close to the Margarita and Deer Park Highland development. I spent almost ten years working in the federal government in emergency preparedness, response, and recovery. I am very, very familiar with the effects, long term and short term, of natural disasters, including fire and earth movement. On the night of June sixth, twenty-two, I received notification from a friend that her naxal told her that my house was very near to a fire. I was terrified. I didn't even receive the naxal. I didn't know what was going on. Well, I have a to-go pack because I did work for FEMA for a very long time. So I packed up the cat, got in the car, and drove as far as I thought was safe to see where the fire was. I was either going to get it all clear, or I was driving to Sacramento. Those are the options. I realized after I got, was able to see approximately six or seven fire trucks, all kinds of activity, the thing seemed to be winding down, and it looked okay. And then I realized I was trapped. There is no way, there was no way around the trucks, there was no way only back. If there had been one more car on the street with me, I, we both would have perished because there is no way out. I had to back up into somebody's back into driveway and go back the way I came. I urge you all to reconsider this proposal. This is seriously dangerous for all of us who already live here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Springgate.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Mary Bradley Quinlan. I live on Dominican Heights. I want to speak to this same issue about the Dominican Valley property proposal. I, I was born and raised in San Rafael. I grew up in this neighborhood. And by the looks of me, you know, that's many years' experience in in this neighborhood. So I can speak to the different terrain and geology of the area. I played capture the flag as a child on this, this exact property and watched developments happen around this property because this one area was deemed undevelopable. There were, in the winter, we slid down muddy hills because there were streams that came out of the hillside in exactly the area where the eucalyptus trees are now that they will, are planning to cut down and build fifty-five new homes. My main concern here tonight is the high wildfire risk. Growing up, we had a fire every summer in Black Canyon and San Pedro Ridge. San Rafael Fire Department and our wildfire management, recent wildfire management teams have done wonderful efforts in mitigating wildfire. However, adding fifty-five more residents here will increase that density. In a neighborhood association evacuation drill, it was deemed that not all residents will be able to escape via. In a Neighborhood Association evacuation drill, it was deemed that not all residents will be able to escape via vehicle, that many of us will have to leave on foot. There are visions of the, of the Oakland wildfire when you think of that. I, Mayor, you came to our Neighborhood Association meeting in October of 22, and at that time, you committed yourself to our, to our service as our mayor. I, we are not angry residents. We are your constituents. And we really need your ear and your presence on this issue. I ask you personally to gather and to really pay attention to our needs and to the safety, the public safety issues regarding this property development. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley Quinlan. Thank you.
I'm Tom Quinlan. I've only lived here for 40 years. But I want to say, you know, listening to your discussion and your questions about the DRB was very enlightening. It, it brought home the squeeze that, that you, as a city, are in vis-à-vis housing and state government. Uh, and I was glad to see that you are apparently making an effort to hold on to local discretion. And it's important in this Dominican case that you do the same, that you, for example, kick consideration of this over to a future day when people aren't traveling for Christmas or away on holidays and can meaningfully participate in, in meetings like this. The other thing, though, is I think you really need to get rid of, or at least get some control over this big greasy rat, the builder's remedy, uh, that's running around nibbling at the fabric of the community that, that we've all built and the reasonable development standards and process that we all rely on. Uh, it's, you know, if, if you look over the builder's remedy, it just shouldn't apply here. You have a plan, you've had a plan for a while, uh, and you also have, uh, excuse me, an incomplete application that you've been acting on. I have not heard the city push back in any meaningful way against the developers here. It's important that you not roll over. It's important that you advocate for the people in this community in a meaningful way and push your case, not to the crazy extent that you lose a lot of money, but dare the state and, and fight back on this builder's remedy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quinlan. Anybody else? Oh, go ahead. Yeah, of course.
My name is Beverly.
Wait, here, say, start over where we can hear you a little bit better. There you go. Perfect. Excuse me. No, take your time.
Okay, City Council. Please direct your staff to find the application for the Dominican Valley development as incomplete. The application is not complete because the developer did not agree to the city's mandatory indemnification clause by reserving the right to challenge it. This is directly against the requirements required by the city of all developer submittals. The only reason someone would write in red in their application submittal that they reserve the right to challenge it is because they anticipate litigation or contest, contest. This is a liability to the city and therefore the taxpayers. It is a benefit for the developer that already has huge gains on this property as the expense of other residents, safety, quality of life, and value. In closing, the city should not be spending any time reviewing an application where the developer is not agreeing to cover the city's own expense due to the potential lawsuits. Indemnity is important. Please make sure the city protects itself and the residents, taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, anyone else? Oh.
Thank you for your time this evening. Uh, my name is Diane Porius, and my husband and I live at 255 Highland Avenue, right at Margarita at the fire road. I've talked about this at a prior meeting on, um, June 6th, 2022, a fire that started down below on Deer Park landed on our property. And my husband and I are not opposed to development. We definitely recognize that we need housing in San Rafael. And as we've talked about and heard you guys talk about, San Rafael has done a good job on that front. But I would hate to see where, in attempting to solve one problem, we create others. I won't repeat. I think a lot of really great comments have been made here tonight about the fire danger. And I'm just standing up again tonight to say, if you weren't there, you don't understand what it was like. And to have the firefighters in our driveway doing a tremendous job, cautioning us and applauding the work that we've done on our property, that without which the fire came within 20 feet of our house, you know, how scary is that? The idea that people can't evacuate and that we have these narrow roads and twists and turns. We do need housing, and I am, I think it's pretty reasonable to expect our elected officials to work together with us and developers to make good choices and good decisions so there's proper amounts of housing for everyone, but that we're not creating more problems by solving this one. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Porius.
My name is Kate. Don't pull the microphone up. We're just getting a lot of work done today. There we go. Thank you.
Lots of talls and shorts.
Yeah, no, that's great. I can hear you.
My name is Polly Elkin. For the past 26 years, we've lived directly adjacent to Dominican University and take daily hikes on the Gold Hill Trail. I'm a voting constituent and am retired from a 37-year career in the real estate profession as an appraiser and a broker. I am not a NIMBY. I have worked extensively on feasibility appraisals for large developers like dividend homes and Penn Brothers, as well as on smaller niche developments for custom home developers. I know what a viable and acceptable site looks like. The reason I am speaking up about the proposed Dominican Valley application is not because I don't want new housing in my neighborhood. I do. We need housing. It is because of the poorly considered safety risks of adding 50 homes to an area with almost zero street parking. Just go drive up around there and try and find a spot. There aren't any. Mostly, there are single-lane roads, which are totally inadequate for emergency vehicles, as many people have said. Marin wildfire has been to our home on Palm Avenue four times to assess the foliage in our well-tended garden for potential, potential fire ladders that could be mitigated. I have to laugh out loud that this is their focus when the city of San Rafael is considering a building permit for this ill-conceived Dominican Valley development. There are many other superior locations for development in San Rafael, and certainly downtown, the old 24-hour fitness building. I mean, what an eyesore. When our family and friends come to town, they can't believe how terrible our downtown looks. Go to Petaluma, go to, go to Sonoma, go to some beautiful downtowns, and see where really great, well-thought-out development is happening. So thank you very much, and I hope you will continue to consider our thinking around this.
Thank you, Ms. Elkin.
My name is Steve Mainz. I, I live on Locust Avenue. I've been there for 30 years. So I've been a voter in San Rafael, amongst other things. Um, I want to give a different perspective on what's happening here. While I support everything that the Save Dominican Valley people are saying, and all the speakers here tonight, I agree with everything they've said totally. I want to give you, though, a historical perspective. I don't know if you're familiar with a man named William Hammond Hall. You probably haven't. William Hammond Hall was the civil engineer who laid out Magnolia Valley for William T. Coleman back in the 1870s. Hammond Hall was quite famous in his day. He was the chief engineer on development of Golden Gate Park. He developed Piedmont. He also laid out the UC campus in Berkeley. One of his other projects, as I've just said, was Dominican Valley. He looked at this project specifically as one where he wanted to make nature control how the streets and how the houses were going to be built. He wanted nature to be the predominant decider of how things should be laid out. He didn't want rigid grids typical of urban development in this country. He was far ahead of his time, and he was very careful in how he laid these things out. He did not want to have steep grading, landfill. He wanted to accept the natural contours of the earth. He also, along with Coleman, brought in a great deal of vegetation to change the whole look of the community. And because of his efforts, we have Dominican Valley as we have it today. And I think that you would agree, we would not want to desecrate Falkirk Mansion over here. And by the same token, I don't think we want to change the history that's involved in Dominican Valley and how important it is to the city and the history of urban development in California. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mainz.
Good evening. My name's Claudia Muller. I'm a San Rafael resident and live adjacent to the proposed Dominican Valley development. As you know, the developer has submitted a formal application to the city for 50 homes on the Dominican Valley property. This proposal includes 27 single-family homes, 17 townhomes, including 14 with junior ADUs and six duplexes. Given the density of this development, which you've heard from many others, and the lack of adequate setbacks and spacing between homes, we are very concerned that this proposal constitutes a threat to the safety of our community and will result in significant adverse environmental impacts. As has been mentioned in prior meetings and highlighted in written communication to the council in September, the roads and infrastructure surrounding the proposed development are substandard. A development of this size would put all residents and visitors at risk in the event of fire or natural disaster. As you're also aware, the developer is claiming builder's remedy, which would allow them to ignore local zoning regulations. The city has spent years developing a general plan, zoning codes, and a housing element with significant community input. And it's imperative that you work to enforce the rules and regulations associated with them now. We sent a letter to the council in October detailing several bases on which the city should reject the claim of builder's remedy. In particular, the city's housing element was in substantial compliance with state housing law at the time that the developers' pre-applications were submitted. So builder's remedy does not apply. To date, we have had no response to our letters, nor had any indication that the city was pursuing this denial. We ask that the city council direct staff to reject the claim of builder's remedy for this proposal.
Thank you, Ms. Muller. Thank you.
Hi, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Terry Hollowell, and I live in Dominican. Been about 14 and a half years now. So as you're well aware, our elected officials are in office to represent their constituents. We would expect and hope that as our representatives, you will fight on our behalf and honor the commitment to improve San Rafael and the environment in partnership with the community and represent our interests and not those of the developer. I feel there's been a real lack of transparency through this entire process, and this is irreplaceable open space. I hike it four or five times a week. It is not going to be easily replaced. It's, it's gone forever when it's gone. Mayor Collin, I know that you wrote a letter to Sarah Gardner in June remarking that I know what it's like to deal with angry residents. So I think most of us here today are just asking for your true consideration about what's about to take place because it's going to dramatically impact our neighborhood and our lifestyle, not because of the NIMBY, but there are real safety concerns, and there is a lot of really good space in San Rafael that could be developed with far fewer risks. And really, you've just got a very small fraction of our community here today. There's a pretty big holiday coming up in about a week. So I think if we held this later in January, you would see far more people here expressing concern. So I'm hoping that you'll allow us the opportunity to express those concerns with more in our community because I think they're very valid. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hollowell.
Uh, good evening. My name is Dr. Kostopoulos. I'm a resident of 24 years in Rafael. Been hiking, biking, that area ever since I moved here. The lot at Mission and Lincoln, I believe, that's a buil- building going up there, right? Okay, that is sensible development. That lot sat there empty for years and years and years. Okay, apartments are going up there. North Gate, it seems like that's a, would be a massive increase in our population. So, uh, again, you, it's easy to say, oh, you know, you guys are all just NIMBYs, but it, it's different when it's actually open space that's being taken away, that's contiguous with San Rafael's own open space. It's mind-boggling that that couldn't have been somehow acquired and added to the city of San Rafael's open space. I mean, it, it's really disingenuous to go, oh, housing crisis, housing crisis, housing crisis. Let's, let's get real here. This is one man who purchased this land, and he simply wants to make money. This is not to provide housing. This is going to be expensive housing in an expensive area. So, yeah, that, that seems really disingenuous at best. I'd like to remind everybody here, I'm going to quote from the city of San Rafael's website, "The mission of the city of San Rafael is to," anybody know? "To enhance the quality of life and provide for a safe, healthy, prosperous, and livable environment in partnership with the community." "We ask that you honor the mission statement of our city." Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Thank you for reading our website. We put a lot of effort into it. Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Beteri.
Alvateri Gersel Park. Uh, I'm going to change the subject just a little bit. I don't live in the Dominican area, though I did hike there. I have hiked there, and I will continue to hike there and enjoy it a lot. What I came here to say is, um, one, thank you for letting me speak today. And then, uh, having some free time, I did review the agenda and city minutes for the last few months, almost the whole year. And then what I noticed is that this group, city council members and the staff, have completed an impressive list of accomplishments over the year. So for that, I'd like to thank you. Thank you for doing that. I think that was, um, my first experience with that, so it's something special. It's true with government, uh, you get to celebrate by relaxing, so you get to take the next five seconds. And there you go. Get back to work. Additionally, I'd like to say it would be novel to conclude that the heavy listing of city government is complete, and the majority of attentions for the New Year is now directed at monitoring the progress and results of the men, uh, efforts mentioned above. If so, then it would be a question of what is that direction? What objective and which form should it take? Would the search and review of measures reveal exactly the results as forecasted when first proposed? Or would a list of unintended consequences show themselves in the data-driven detail required for such an analysis? How long would this take? Would such a net snare older projects launched in prior administrations? And what reaction would the city have to those? Is it possible that complacency is happening in our city and we're moving in the wrong direction? Maybe, maybe not. So then it's the task to adjust and guide these most important projects, but just assume the best and march forward into the New Year. To this question, I'd like to find out the answer.
If you could finish, even though I really like the five seconds of relaxation, so you have five more seconds and then you could complete.
I did time that. Anyway, Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Beteri. Thank you. Anybody else? Going once? You're coming down. I wasn't sure if you were leaving or coming down. You're coming down. Well, no, no, no. I want to hear what you have to say. Welcome.
Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm Daniel Campbell. I have been living on Margarita Drive for over 20 years now. I love this area. The elephant in the room for me is that the proposed development is in an area that has no roads that meet fire code. So this is a very dangerous situation. Now, considering if there is a fire and if there is an inability to evacuate due to the increased homes and increased cars, and if the worst-case scenario were to happen, if people are not allowed to evacuate because they're burned into their cars because of this new development, who bears responsibility? Is it shared by you guys, or is there just going to be one individual that we can count on? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Earl Campbell. Yeah, come on down.
Thank you for staying awake.
Pull it a little bit closer.
Thank you for staying awake for all of us. I appreciate your attendance, council members and mayor. My name is Christina Cliff. You've seen me before. My mother built her house in nineteen fifty-seven on the street, so she's still living and still in that property. I appreciate your conscientious focus on making sure that this, anything that's developed there is for the benefit of the people that reside in that community. That is our priority, to protect the residents that are existing there. We are currently experiencing additional landslides in the area. We have streets that have closed. We have fires, you know, that have happened in the neighborhoods. It is one of the remaining few open spaces that all of our larger San Rafael and beyond enjoy communing with nature and the animals that are a plethora there. It's a gift for us to have this open space area that so few communities have. To lose this gem would be like losing our beautiful courthouse without the foresight that we did not save that would have made the city of San Rafael and the downtown a very unique area. Please do not let that same thing happen to this vegetation area that supplies us with the spotted owls, that supplies us with horned owls that hoot at night through our evenings, the bats that still come through, the monarch butterflies, all of the olive-leaf flycatcher birds, the amphibious animals, and also endangered purple-needlenose grass that we have found. And we will have more endangered species to be found in that community, given the time to do that. We need more time for the considerations of the sequoia issues that are abundant in this area, the streams, the waterways that have yet to be documented and confirmed. All of these issues need serious consideration. Thank you for your time and consideration on these.
Thank you for your comment. Not sure if people are leaving. Okay. Nope, she's just going to the back. Okay. Okay, I don't see going once, going twice. Okay, thank you. I'm going to close public comment. And thank you all for staying and sharing your thoughts with us. And hopefully you found some of the DRB conversation enlightening around MSS. You probably never knew all that about your refuse rates, did you? So, so thank you for being here and thank you for your comments. I do want to turn over to the city manager before you leave, before you all race out, because we can't comment on it, but just hold on a second. So go ahead, city manager.
Sure, Mayor Kate, and community, I wanted to comment briefly on the process. I think it will be really informative and helpful as a reminder what the, where we are in the development process for this project. Up until the fifth or sixth of December, we only had a pre-application on this project. What that means is there is no public process at a pre-development application. The planning staff review that and provide feedback. So up until December sixth, we didn't have a formal development application. So when you're asking for public process, there is a long public process that includes an extensive secret review. Now that we have an actual application for development, the staff is reviewing that. I can tell you that in the next day or so, we will have an update, project status that will be posted on the website. For those of you that are already subscribed to that webpage, you'll get an automatic email that says there's a new status on this project, so keep an eye out for that. And if you want that information, you can just go and put your email in the subscribe. Following that, as the development application continues through the process, as you all, as we talked about earlier, we've got design review board currently. We have planning commission. There'll be many and multiple hearings related to any project that would move forward. So I just want to assure all of you that the concerns about wildfire and the road and evacuation and sequoia and the habitat and the environment, there, there is a lengthy process that has yet to occur that would occur if the application proceeds. So the concerns about input and the ability for the city or the city council to do anything up to this point, there, there has been nothing that we can do in just waiting for this application. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. And, oh, yep, yep. Actually, let me adjourn the meeting, and then you can talk to the city manager directly. So thank you all for being here. I wish you all a happy, healthy, safe, and peaceful holiday in twenty-twenty-four. This meeting's adjourned.